Eh, pensaste que ibas a ver más, ¿no? Frida es claramente influenciada por el surrealismo. Practica algunos de los "cálaberes exquisitos", o la libre expresión de ideas mientras vienen. Pero también tiene muchas diferencias importantes con los surrealistas. Principalmente porque mira su propia historia. También porque sus comunicaciones son muy directas. Por ejemplo, un pintura como este se llama "Pensando en la muerte", y el significado del trabajo es inmediato y evidente. Si miras un trabajo como este, "El sueño", dirías: "Bueno, si eso no es surrealista, ¿qué es?" Ves este sillón flotante. Pero en realidad Frida tenía un esqueleto encima de su sillón, como puedes ver en esta fotografía. Los últimos 30 años son los más productivos de la vida de Frida. Viaja a Nueva York, donde tiene un solo exhibe en la Galleria Julian Levy. Y luego, en París, este pintura, "El fruto", es adquirido por la Louvre. Y se reúne y se adora a los mejores artistas de su día, como Marcel Duchamp y Pablo Picasso, que le daban esos famosos ojales en forma de manos que pintaba en muchas de sus autoportras. También recibía comisiones como esta. Esta fue comisionada por la esposa del editor de Time Magazine. Había esta mujer que había cometido suicidio y quería darle una portra a su madre. Así que Frida hizo este pintura y nunca fue dada a su madre. Pero es interesante ver cómo combina la técnica de retablo con una dimensión casi cinematográfica al trabajo. Hablábamos de cómo... los 30 años son... la vida de Frida más... productiva. Se conecta con los surrealistas que la llaman uno de ellos. Tiene éxito en Nueva York y en París. Cuando... cuando regresa a México... su vida entera cambia. Porque Diego... le pide divorcio. Y como había hecho en... Detroit... esta idea de enfrentarse a las experiencias más íntimas y dolorosas, y de alguna manera tratar de hacerle sentido o entenderlas a través del arte y con sus poderes creativos. Diego había sido la persona que había introducido a Frida al arte y que le había abierto un mundo, y ahora se separa de él. Pero... como es... un constante en su trabajo... su respuesta es con grandes obras de arte. Quizás la pintura más famosa de Frida Kahlo es... las dos Fridas, las dos Fridas que vemos aquí. Y en ella pintaba a la vestida con un costumbre de Tijuana, la Frida que Diego amaba. Y en una vestida blanca. La vestida, interesante, de una marioneta, la Frida que Diego ya no amaba. Y ambas están conectadas con sangre. Una... lleva... una pequeña portra de Diego Rivera... en su mano. Y ambas comparten este tipo de solidaridad dentro. De nuevo, esta idea... que a veces puedes encontrar... dentro... poder y compañía. Y la fuerza para seguir adelante a pesar de todo. Y... lo que es tan sorprendente es cómo Frida hace sentido de las cosas pintándolas, entendéndolas. Hace esta obra donde se presenta vestida como un hombre con su pelo corto. Y encima, ya sabes, las palabras:[382.64][383.04]"Mira, si te quería fue por tu pelo. Ahora que estás pelona ya no te quiero". Mira, si te amé, fue porque de tu pelo. Ahora que no tienes pelo, ya no te amo. Y luego, en su diario, hablaba de qué color significaba para ella. Y es interesante porque dice que el color amarillo era el color de la locura. Y en este pintura vemos este... los cuchillos muy cerca de su cexa. Y luego el pelo... es como su cutefeminidad, como animales, en una silla amarilla. Y ahora esta imagen masculina de Frida... está allí desde el principio. Encuentras... fotos de Frida vestida como un hombre desde el principio. Y... como dice Carlos Monsivais: lo que es sorprendente es la habilidad de Frida... de enfrentarse a la enfermedad, el dolor y la decepción con este tipo de afirmación de la vida. Esta vitalidad. Ella niega... ser pitida por nadie. El verdadero escándalo de Frida Kahlo no es que tuviera amantes o que tuviera mujeres o hombres. No, el verdadero escándalo... es que es una mujer desesperadamente enferma con 30 cirugías en su espalda que ignora ese dolor. Que ignora... esta condenación de la vida. Una vez Frida dijo: "Fui asesinada por la vida". Y vive aún a pesar de las cirugías y a pesar del dolor y a pesar de... tener todo en contra de ella. Ese es el verdadero escándalo de Frida. Una mujer que... niega ser considerada invalida, niega ser víctima. Y que vive intensamente y completamente. Y en sus tiempos de mayor dolor... Frida hace algunos de sus mejores trabajos. La mayoría de las pinturas de Frida son muy pequeñas, con la excepción de las dos Fridas que acabamos de ver. Y este pintura. Ahora, este pintura es interesante. Es una Frida Kahlo perdida. Nadie sabe dónde está este pintura. Y si recuerdas la imagen que te mostré cuando comenzamos la lección de esta chica joven rodeada de estas figuras de cultura popular. Es casi como si traiga estas figuras de nuevo... en este pintura. Siempre la ves, dámelo. Ahora, el divorcio entre Frida y Diego no duró mucho tiempo. Había este doctor americano que le dio a Diego Rivera un certificado en el que fue declarado incapaz de la fidelidad. Por razones gandularas. Así que se... se casaron en San Francisco. Y... se ha dicho mucho de Diego, el "hombreñizer" y Frida. Bueno... no sé qué es el "hombreñizer"... ¿qué dirías de una mujer "hombreñizer"? Frida tenía tantos amantes como Diego. No, no tanto, pero ella tenía... Y estaba hablando con Rinna Lasso... ayer. Y ella me decía cómo Diego salió de Frida y comenzó a besarla. Y pasaron horas besándose. Así que es interesante observar cómo esta pareja, que rompe todas las reglas de la sociedad... todas las convenciones de la sociedad, lo que deberías ser y lo que no eres. Lo que es correcto y lo que es incorrecto. Tuvo un amor fuerte entre sí. Podemos ver eso en las cartas que cambiaron. También podemos verlo en las pinturas. Aquí tienes a Frida casi presentándose como un ser único con Diego. O esta, donde Diego Rivera de alguna manera se convierte en el hijo que nunca tuvo Frida Kahlo. Un amor poderoso. Porque es un abrazo, no solo de su esposo, sino... un poco de lo que estábamos escuchando sobre la naturaleza y los animales. Este tipo de abrazo holístico, un abrazo total. Y... entré al cine, por favor. Es un película donde miras... la relación. La Casa Azul, que ahora es un museo... se convirtió... en un espacio verdaderamente mágico. Fue lleno de monjes, de perros y pájaros. Y increíbles fiestas, porque... a pesar de su enfermedad... Frida continúa dando estas fiestas enormes. Walderupe Rivera hace unos años publicó un libro de las recetas de Frida. Son magníficos. La mejor chile sin hogar que hemos tenido. Música. Esta afirmación de alegría, de cocinar, de sexo, de... integridad. Y... encuentro... hay muchos de estos historiadores de arte que tratan de... separar la arte de su biografía. Y dicen: "No, esa biografía es solo para columnistas de gossip. No me interesa las cosas. Soy un crítico artístico pura". Correcto. Solo voy a lidiar con el arte. Encontré que es imposible, porque el arte y la vida están entrelazados. Y de la misma manera que aparecen las vestidas y las pinturas... también ves los platos y ves la cocina y ves las relaciones de amor. Todo se junta. Por ejemplo, Frida es conocida básicamente por sus autoportras. Pero... también es la autora de algunas de las vidas más poderosas de ese siglo XX. Salomon Grimberg hizo un hermoso libro sobre estas cosas. Y estas pinturas que... tradicionalmente son pinturas bored, pinturas de frutos y flores. El tipo de cosas que pones en tu habitación o en tu mesa de cenita. Principalmente la mesa de cenita. Con Frida se convierten en intensamente... erótico. Este pintura que estamos viendo aquí... fue dado a una de las primeras damas de México. Y la mujer fue sorprendida porque... la papaya central parece mucho más parecida a una vagina. ¿Sabes qué hizo el idiota? Le regaló de vuelta. Ahora los chicos grandes deben estar lejandole. Nada en Frida es bored. Todo es intenso. Todo es... mira esto, este es uno de mis favoritos. Se llama "La marioneta". La marioneta que es sorprendida cuando ve la vida abierta. Y nota cómo esos melones se abren. O... o mira este. Todos estos son como penas y vagina y todo es rojo. De repente, una pintura que podía ser completamente bored... se convierte en intensamente erótico. Bold como la propia amor. O esta pieza. Es una flor, pero también podría ser una utero o un penis. No importa. Y no es solo sexual. La fuerza no es solo sexual. Estos frutos pueden estar sangrando. Y estos están claramente muriendo. A veces... ya sabes, la pintura... se convierte en la misma vida. La incapacidad de Frida de tener hijos... su deseo de dar vida a las cosas... se materializa en sus obras. Aquí la ves, literalmente... fertilizando un suelo barroso... con su propio sangre. Y se rodea con niños, con juguetes. Pintanlos exquisitamente y hermosamente. Esta es una obra que... tuve el privilegio hace unos meses de ver esta pintura en mi mano. Es un masterpiece. Todo está pintado, todo está descrito, cada pequeña cosa es algo. Y pone estos esqueletos... y pone todos los dioses y todos los héroes. Y dice: "La razón por la que la gente busca religión y héroes es el miedo". El miedo a la vida... y el miedo a la muerte. Y aquí, ya sabes, la ves pintando cada figura religiosa, de cristianismo a hinduismo. Y luego en el centro... se conecta todo este mundo con su propio... cielo de leche. Y la figura de Moisés. Tema y libro freudista. También se rodea con monjes y animales, y todos ellos se vuelven parte de su arte. Cebollas, pájaros. Y por supuesto, estas obras pueden ser leídas a varios niveles. Esta es una pintura que hizo justo después de que su padre muriera. Y se podría decir que la catedrila convirtiéndose en una ballena es una metáfora de la transformación de la vida. Quizás su pintura más famosa con animales se inspiraría en su pequeño cerdo, Granizo. Pero de una manera opuesta a la danza tradicional de cerdos en la que pintas a un hombre con la cabeza de un cerdo... Frida haría un cerdo con su cara. Pero este cerdo está herido y condenado. Es una pieza extraordinaria. Y en ella ves la internalización de todas estas influencias, la influencia cristiana. Es claro, la ikonografía de San Sebastian. El sufrimiento personal. O maestras como estas, en las que, de nuevo, ves... los tornos cristianos, el pájaro de avocados. Pero en ningún lugar Frida... en su subconsciente está mejor capturada que en su diario. Demoró muchos años para que el diario fuera publicado. Y cuando salió, supongo que la gente se decepcionó. Porque contó mucho menos y mucho más de lo que esperaban. Probablemente esperaron un discurso vulgar como los que recibimos hoy. Pero lo que hace Frida es... una ventana... a su alma. Es realmente sorprendente. Déjame ver ese clip del cine, por favor. Aquí ves a Frida con sus manos llenas de anillos mirando este masterpiece que es su diario. Algo que no se hacía para venderle a nadie. No le importaba el dinero o todas esas cosas estúpidas que preocupamos hoy. Estúpido pensar en vender algo. Y Frida piensa en cosas que son mucho más importantes que eso. Nada salaz, vulgar o estúpido. Pone, por ejemplo, toda esta idea de los surrealistas, de lo que llaman "escribir automático", que es básicamente escribir las primeras cosas que vienen de tu mente. Puedes probar esto esta noche. Un trozo de papel blanco y simplemente escribe todo lo que viene a tu mente. Te sorprenderás con lo que sale. Hace esto en... O cosas como... el accidente. Pones un punto de lápiz y luego miras ese punto de lápiz y draws... alrededor o dentro. También es sorprendente las cualidades de Frida como escritora. Raquel Tiboll ha publicado varios libros sobre las escrituras y las cartas de Frida. Y solo quería compartir una carta de amor a Frida, a Carlos Pellejcer. En español dice: ¿Puedes inventar verbos? Quiero inventar uno para ti. Te cielo. Te cielo. De esta manera mis alas se extenderán enormes para amarte. Sin medida. Gracias por estar vivo, por permitirme tocar tu luz más íntima. Y por decir con tus ojos y con tu voz lo que he estado esperando toda tu vida. Ser capaz de decir eso. Y todo esto... entre cirugías y dolor... pintura en las condiciones más horribles... tratando desesperadamente para ocultar, no ocultar, superar el dolor. E incluso burlándose. Una vez le preguntaron: "¿Por qué bebes tanto?" Y ella dijo: "Mira... bebo para derramar mis tristezas, pero las cosas malditas han aprendido a nadar". Estos son los escorces torturados que Frida tenía que usar. Y las pintaba. Entré al cine, por favor. Aquí ves... uno de los últimos filmes de Frida. Y... no es que ella... negara lo que le estaba pasando. Quiero decir... Frida nos deja algunos testimonios de dolor que son inolvidables. La columna rota que Arturo García Augustos describió. Las agujas. Quizás el deterioro en la vida de Frida ocurrió en 1946. Estaba convencida de hacer una cirugía en los Estados Unidos donde fusionaban su espina con metal y hueso. Pero la cirugía fue un desastre, no funcionó. Y... la lesión fue infectada. Y Frida nunca se recuperó de eso. Pero en esta pintura, en la que nuevamente se presenta con sí misma... lleva este pequeño anillo que dice:[1775.68][1776.40]"Arbole de la esperanza, mantente firme". Arbole de la esperanza, estate firme. Y para terminar... me gustaría compartir con ustedes... el último pintura de Frida Kahlo. And in closing, I would like to share with you the last painting of Frida Kahlo. The painting of watermelons. And then, in the central watermelon, Frida would write a words that not only define her position in life, but interestingly are also a response to fascism. In Salamanca, the hideous fascists led by Francisco Franco occupied the University of Salamanca with the cry of "Viva la muerte." And Unamuno responded to them, "Venceréis porque tenéis la fuerza. Pero no convenceréis porque para convencer hay que tener la razón." So you will win because you have the force, but you will not convince, because to convince, you must have reason. And so I believe that in this last statement, Frida was not only affirming her beliefs, but was confronting the fascists here in this painting. In the central watermelon, she would write her name, the date, and then with big capital letters, she would write the words, "Viva la vida." Long Live Life. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. I'm RTC Public Information Officer Joe Harrington, coming to you from one of the busiest intersections in all of the Truckee Meadows, the intersection of Pyramid Way and McCarran Boulevard. Unfortunately, it's also a high crash location. But that's why the RTC is embarking on an innovative project to enhance safety and mobility for everyone. After relocating residents at no cost to them, demolition began to make way for big improvements at this intersection. 60,000 vehicles a day travel through the intersection of Pyramid Way and McCarran Boulevard, creating significant safety challenges. This project will create a new additional through lane in each direction on Pyramid Way. Dedicated turning lanes will also be added to Pyramid and McCarran, helping with traffic flow. The southbound freeride on Pyramid Way will be improved, so drivers will be able to more easily get to US 395. The project will also result in an improved configuration of the intersection of Pyramid Way and Queen Way. Additionally, the RTC is constructing a new paved multi-use path that'll parallel Pyramid on the eastern side. It'll be ideal for bicyclists and pedestrians. Plus, the RTC worked with the city of Sparks to preserve mature trees and is creating a decorative wall that will flank the path. Traffic controls are in place, and those involve periodic lane closures. The traffic controls will change throughout the project, so be sure to plan ahead and anticipate delays. Throughout construction, access is being preserved to nearby businesses by maintaining at least one open entrance. Residents can also still get to and from their homes. This project is slated to be completed in spring of 2018. Stay up to date and receive traffic control information via email. It's easy. Just sign up at pyramidmccarron.com and be sure to follow RTC on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. I'm Joe Harrington for RTC TV. Have a great day. You're RTC, our community.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children.
I don't know, probably more than 20,000, I would assume.
Hundred thousand.
I'm gonna say a lot, so probably around, say like a million.
Four hundred.
Seventy-five thousand?
Fifty thousand.
I'd say a couple hundred thousand.
How about a thousand?
Millions.
Millions.
Hundreds?
I don't have an idea, but I think it's a lot of people.
Probably about four hundred thousand?
Probably two hundred thousand?
Oh, golly. I think it's maybe around thirty-five thousand these days, something like that.
Drunk driving or impaired driving?
Texting and driving?
Uh, inattention.
Distractions?
Alcohol.
Alcohol. I definitely, alcohol-related for sure. I think it's eye-opening, after moving and living in Las Vegas the past year, how many fatalities and crashes I've seen personally due to alcohol-related.
I'd say not paying attention to other people on the road.
Well, driving, test, driving, test, driving, test.
People are irresponsible in driving. They don't pay attention. They have distractions from like cell phones, putting makeup on, to just eating. See, I'm a full-time pedestrian, so, because I'm legally blind. So I've almost got hit several times just in the crosswalks because people are not paying attention when they turn right.
Speeding, no seatbelts, things like that.
Yeah, I've heard drunken driving and then fatigue are the two big ones, perhaps.
Someday in the future, probably.
Yeah, not gonna happen.
No, not at all. I don't think it's realistic. But I do think that if we work towards reaching that goal, that we will decrease the amount of fatalities.
Absolutely not. This is humanity.
No.
No, not with as many cars and not with, you know, the amount of people here.
Yeah, if people stop using their phones while they're driving.
Um, it's not incredibly likely, but it's always good to strive for perfection.
If we can get it under a thousand, that would be cool.
I would say we could at least cut it in half of what it is now.
I have no idea. Two.
If the number was down to 10, I think that'd be good.
Acceptable would be anything lower than what it is now. Say maybe a thousand.
I think our goal for fatalities needs to be brought down at least 50% in the next couple of years. 10.
10.
10?
Under 5,000?
Like under 100?
Less than we have now, I suppose.
Zero?
Zero. Well, you'd have to say zero for that.
For my family? Personally, zero. That's acceptable for my family.
Zero.
None.
Zero.
Zero. Zero.
Zero.
None.
Zero.
Zero.
None. Obviously, we'd hope for zero. Yeah.
Oh, zero.
Um, zero. You leave the house, you come back to it at the end of the day, I feel like.
Yes, sure, yeah. That'd be great.
Yes.
It should be, yes. Yes.
Yep.
Yes, definitely. Yes. I think there should be zero.
I mean, yeah, you have to aim high, I would say.
It should be zero. That should definitely be the goal. I absolutely agree, yes, that should be the goal.
Are you saying tonight, we can meet up and study together? Text me off, though.
Okay. No!
There is no text, tweet, or call that's worth a life.
One pedestrian death is one too many.
Look out. And look out for each other.
Hey, this Darren Jackson. Darren is the Training Coordinator for the City of Sparks Fire Department Swift Water Rescue Team. Darren, tell us about safety on the river. What are some of the tips that the fire department recommends?
First of all, never swim alone. It's a big problem. If you swim alone and you get stuck, nobody knows where you are and nobody knows what's happened to you. Secondly, on a hot day, it's nice to have a beer along the river. Don't have too many, because it'll impair your judgment. And with the water temperatures going on, the alcohol can speed up hypothermia as well. We've got a big snowpack up in the Sierras. We're gonna have a lot of water, cold temperatures. Hypothermia is a very real problem. You need to wear the proper safety equipment, wet suit or dry suit, helmet, PFD primarily. If you go with nothing else, it needs to be a PFD. You gotta look out for strainers, obstacles that the water can go through that you can't. If you get pinned in one of those, it's easy to drown. There are three dams on the Truckee, if people don't know that. And they're not really safe to boat over unless you're an advanced boater.
Business, it's happening here in Sparks, Nevada. Sparks is a hometown where families thrive and businesses flourish. Sparks, Nevada, is all about location, location, location. Just ask local business owners.
If we wanted to be successful in a region, we needed to be in that region. Being in Reno-Sparks allowed us to really serve our western region.
Located along Interstate I-80, Sparks is within a day's drive of any major city on the west coast and just two hours from Sacramento, California. Sparks is a convenient five-minute drive from the newly renovated and modernized Reno-Tahoe International Airport. And Sparks sits a mere 40 minutes from Lake Tahoe National Forest and recreational areas, a year-round playground.
In other words, you can distribute from here as efficiently as any place else on the west coast. Because we have such a wonderful business climate in the state of Nevada, this is the place to do business. We have a great quality of life. So those are all things we're gonna capitalize on.
Developers and retailers, now is the time to grow. Sparks is your door to opportunity. Come, build your business or bring your event. The heart of downtown Sparks, Nevada, is a redevelopment district seeking new business tenants. The location is prime. Sparks is the event destination, drawing crowds from the Truckee Meadows, but also the entire northwestern United States. Sparks, it's happening here. Events in Sparks cater to all kinds of activities and audiences, but they all have one thing in common: lots and lots of visitors. Businesses can expect as many as 2 million people a year in foot traffic. This young, energetic, mid-sized city offers a great opportunity for your business or event. Check out available public-private partnerships and developer incentives. The Amazing Legend Shopping Mall was built at the Sparks Marina, a regional shopping destination. Care to make your business mark on the local landscape? Whether you need a lot of space or a corner office, there's a location to suit every business. Sparks offers an industrial corridor alongside the I-80 and major railroad lines, the downtown events district, great shopping, a unique marina, fantastic parks and recreation, vibrant neighborhoods, new home communities, and quality colleges and universities. Oh, and did we mention we're just 40 minutes from Lake Tahoe? The local economy is strong and stable thanks to a diversified economic base of construction, entertainment, and tourism. Sparks offers a diversified workforce, ready to help you grow your business. From Sparks, regional product distribution is easy and affordable. Nevada is one of the most business-friendly states, and Sparks offers affordable utilities, competitive rents, and ongoing City of Sparks economic development efforts. Best of all, business-friendly tax rates keep Sparks business costs affordable. Sparks offers the west coast market without the usual high west coast operation costs. With a pro-business city government, setting up shop is a snap. From licensing and permitting to planning and building inspections, Sparks wants to work with you. Business, it's happening here. New businesses, new restaurants, new nightlife, in Victorian Square and year-round events. There's always something happening in Sparks, Nevada. The Business Friendly City Council and Innovative Sparks Economic Development Department are ready to open the door and welcome your company. Bring your business and come grow with us in Sparks.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
We're good at solving crimes. But I would rather our citizens not be a victim of a crime that gets solved versus never being a victim in the first place.
That's the goal for Sparks Police: preventing crimes before they ever happen.
Hello and welcome to Spotlight on Sparks. I'm your host, Adam Mayberry. The same rapid changes in technology that affect you and me are changing the way that police protect lives and property. In the next half hour, we'll take you behind the scenes at the Sparks Police Department to see what's new and how it's impacting your safety.
Excited, scared, working through the whole process, but most of all, ready to serve and continue to serve the citizens of Sparks. This is a great opportunity, and I look forward to advancing the police department within the city that I've lived in and been a part of my whole life. We have an attitude that if you've already invested in this community, you're going to continue to invest in this community. And back in 1991, when I started, the people that were in power at that time took a chance on a young, 21-year-old Sparks kid. And I'm glad and happy that I've been able to prove them right and be able to move through the reins and now lead this great organization. Well, my parents moved us into this community, my brother and I, in 1976. So I moved over here about a mile down the road from where we sit today in the police department. My parents still live in that same house. And went to Green Brailler Mentory School, back when you could walk and ride your bike to school. Went to Catherine Dunn the first year it opened, Dilworth Middle School, Reed High Grad, and UNR. And so I've been in this community really for the last 37 years. If you look at the growth, and really, I mean, no one in the city could have projected the extreme growth that we had from 1999, 2000 through the 2006 range. But the police department, in a percentage-wise, did not keep up with the population increase and growth. Historically, the police department's been around 1.5 officers per thousand in through the 90s, and we have dropped all the way down to 1.14 officers per thousand during that growth spurt. Based on the last several years and a little decline in population in Sparks, we currently sit around 1.2 officers per thousand residents as we sit today. So as the growth took place, as we did the great expansion to the east and to the north, we haven't been able to keep up with that growth with the number of officers proportionate to that population. If we look at national averages, 1.8 to 2.0 officers per thousand for a community our size nested within the greater Truckee Meadows. And that's one of the key aspects that we have to look at is, if you look at a standalone city of 90,000 people, a ratio of 1.2 might not necessarily be bad. But when you look at that we're in the Truckee Meadows and we are sitting in a valley of approximately 400,000 to 450,000 with a gaming aspect and a 24-hour lifestyle, that's when those numbers really don't meet the needs that our citizens have.
Everything starts out with, before we come to work, I think, having a good home life. When you do come to work, we sit down at briefing and we talk about issues that we need to address right away. And then when we come out, for me, when I hit the gate, the light switch is on and I'm totally focused on work. I don't think about my home life, and I think more importantly, I don't bring my job home either. I like to treat everybody the same and fair. I don't like to separate people as far as being a suspect and a victim because I found that treating everybody with respect tends to go a long ways. Our victims need to be able to talk to us and feel comfortable talking to us. And when we have a suspect and we're talking to him, we like to treat him with respect because I found that they'll talk to you more, they'll be able to open up to you. I just pride myself in that and trying to treat everybody with the same amount of respect. It goes a long ways in this job. I joined this department later on in life. I was 38 when I started and had some life experience that I think really helped, especially dealing with people as long as I did. Before I took this job, it... Before I took this job, it, you know, and I, I'll say it time and time again, I think that there's people out, there's good people that just make, you know, make bad decisions. And, you know, we can't be completely hard on them, you know? I mean, we need to, you know, treat them fair.
You wrap your lips around this straw like it's, make a tight seal, and blow on this for about five, six seconds. Keep blowing until I tell you to stop.
Yeah.
Okay? You blow hard. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Good. Go ahead and grab that straw. Just move your butt. Your feet, your back, relax. Spread your feet for me.
What's the, what did I blow?
I'll tell you everything in just a second, okay?
What did I, it's impossible, man. Are you serious?
Yes.
No, 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 come on, guys, listen.
I see.
Look, I am not drunk. I haven't even finished my drink. It's a 16-ounce drink, and I haven't even finished it, for God's sakes.
I want you to take a breath and relax.
I'm not going to relax. I am not drunk.
So we have, basically, we have five different calls, priority calls. It goes one through five, one being the most serious. So if we get a priority one call, we all jump on it and we all go to it, because it's one of those things where somebody needs help immediately. If we have a priority five call, sometimes those hold for a little bit, but not too long, and we'll try to help out with those as much as we can, too. But basically, when you're assigned a beat, it's, you're assigned to a beat, but at the same time, the whole city is actually our beat. You know, everything within the city is our responsibility. It's not just one little area.
Once upon a time, managing resources simply meant assigning cops to a beat. Nowadays, computer-aided dispatch centers and cop cars full of electronics route officers to where they're needed most.
This is just our starting point for the day. Obviously, when a patrol car leaves the station here, it may or may not return back to the station until the end of their shift. And so they are out within those 34.2 square miles that we have. Currently, we have 108 swarm people. And out of that, we have about 62 of those assigned to patrol, and then we have, obviously, detectives and support staff throughout the building. We have about 43 civilians. So we have 62 people that are really designated to be in patrol on a daily basis. Now, that doesn't mean that we have 62 guys working on a daily basis. It means we have 62 people spread out 24/7, 365 to get that coverage. So that really eliminates it down to about 10 or 12 guys assigned to each team. And when you start talking about absentee rates and vacations and annual leave and sick leave and all the things that we all get, we sometimes get down to seven guys at a time working. We have a great, great set of people in our dispatch center, and the computer actually helps designate who responds to those types of calls.
Let me get your medical, okay?
And when we have a minimum, again, of seven officers working, we have seven beats within the city of Sparks. But if a crime happens in one geographic area and there is an officer assigned to that area, typically, especially if it's a priority one and priority two, it requires more than one officer to respond. Sometimes two, sometimes three, sometimes we'll send four, five, or six officers to one call based on the nature of that call. So it draws those resources from the other geographic areas or beats into that one area. So you can see there's a domino effect of that if there is a call in one area, it draws officers there. If we get a call in another geographic area, it may draw one of the officers from another area to that area. And sometimes, we are doing a lot of driving to get to the calls. Between dispatch and the officers, it's kind of like a dance in a way, where they're feeding off of each other, they know where each other are. There's vehicle locators and all the vehicles. Dispatch can actually pull up a map and see where all the vehicles are, and it can assist them in dispatching and allocating those resources where they're going to be the most effective. And we do have a call prioritization system, and priority one calls are in-progress crimes against a person. And those are our main focus. We want to be able to get to a call that is in progress under seven minutes from the time that the person calls 911 or makes that phone call into the dispatch center to the time an officer is on scene.
Thanks.
Those are less than seven minutes. So we prioritize all of our calls to allow that response time. The second level is priority two calls, and those are in-progress crimes against property. Those would be your burglaries, your larcenies, or those types of things that are occurring in progress, but not a crime against a person, such as your robbery and sexual assaults and those types of aggravated batteries and those types of crimes.
Have an officer respond out, okay? Thanks.
Priority threes are not in-progress crimes, and we tend to have a longer response time for those because of the nature of the type of call. Now, we still want to try to get to priority ones, twos, and threes.
Except for...
Are our key focus. Priority fours and fives are really some of your parking complaints and some of the other things that we do that, as our officers have time and availability.
Back in 1903, the Southern Pacific Railway built a roundhouse facility. The railroad offers its Wasworth employees incentive to move to the new site, a clear deed to allot 50 feet by 140 feet in size. And so the city of Sparks, Nevada, was born. The Southern Pacific Railway even offered to pack up every house in Wasworth and ship it free of charge. By 1905, Frank Malay was the city of Sparks Police Chief and also its first fire chief. Over the years, as ranches gave way to homes and shopping centers, a variety of police chiefs have served. Chief Brian Allen is the most recent of local officers to be promoted from within the organization, all the way up to its top leadership position.
In 2008, we followed a national trend of going towards a ComStat model, which was really focusing on weekly, timely, up-to-date information and how you react to crime trends quickly versus over a longer period of time. And during that process, we identified what we refer to as our Big Five. And those Big Five would be all three burglaries, so residential burglary, commercial burglary, and vehicle burglary, grand theft auto, or GTA, and robbery. So those are the five crimes that we automatically and routinely look at at least once a week to determine whether those crime trends are going up or crime trends are going down in those five crimes. On top of that, we also monitor a next level of aggravated assaults, sexual assaults, to see if there is any type of relationship between those crimes as they are being reported as well. Within this detective section, we have the Crime Suppression Unit, and they're the ones that are looking at this tactical crime analysis report, working under the direction of the Detective Division, and identifying these crime trends. And they are going out and looking for and actively searching for the people who are committing those crimes, so that as we see a spike in a certain crime, we can stop that crime trend within a week versus waiting until it's two or three weeks and we have additional victims. A lot of that work is done by our crime analyst, and she is a wonderful asset to this department. Her, along with some help-some-fuls volunteers, will go through all of those calls every week and sift through all of that data and create what we call a tactical crime analysis report. Every week, she prepares this report and presents it, so we can monitor and track the different crime trends. So she is sifting through all of those Big Five calls, but on top of that, every suspicious person call, suspicious vehicle call, or any call that she thinks that she can gather information. And to be honest with you, there are several times that she's put together a suspect, identified a suspect, and basically just had to say, "Go get this guy and arrest him, because he's the one that's committing these crimes," just based on her analysis of the crime trend. When we first created our Crime Suppression Unit, and they have identified a potential crew that was doing residential burglaries, they literally followed that crew into southwest Reno, into Hidden Valley, into the Spanish Springs area, before they had enough evidence that they felt would lead to a conviction, where we affected the traffic stop and made the arrest for the crimes that they had committed. That day, they'd committed no crimes in Sparks, but they were in South Reno and North Spanish Springs, all within a several-hour period. So we have a transient type of criminal within the Reno-Sparks northern Nevada area, not in that they're homeless transient, but they have availability of cars and access to travel throughout the community to commit their crimes. So the people who are living in Reno or unincorporated Washoe County are being able to travel into our city and commit those crimes. So as we move through community-based policing, you know, community-oriented policing, and we take that philosophy, maintain our community philosophy, but now add what we've learned through ComStat and crime analysts, and move into intelligence and predictive policing, it's going to continue to change the face of law. It absolutely is 100% proactive in that they are taking reactive information and proactively trying to prevent the further spread of that crime trend. And there have been times that we have seen an upspike in a certain type of crime. They look through that tactical crime analysis report, find the suspicious vehicles, identify a potential suspect, and within a week, have that person in custody and under arrest. And what that does is it prevents two or three other victims, four or five other victims, and we all know, if you ever had your car broken into or your house broken into, you know, that feeling, and if we can prevent that from happening to our residents, that is a higher goal than being able, good at solving crime. We pulled key critical resources out of our Detective Division and our Patrol Division to make this work, not knowing the results. And now, looking back, if you look at our Unified Crime Reporting numbers from 2008 to 2012, there are areas of the Big Five that we have reduced crime by over 30% over the course of the last four and a half years. If we can take the things that we've learned through Crime Suppression Unit, create a second one, because they only work four days out of the week based on staffing, if we could create another one, what could we really do and affect crime and safety within the city of Sparks?
Technology is helping police detectives lower some crime rates by as much as 30%. But the population growth that triggers such challenges continues today. Although things have slowed down, Sparks will continue to grow. Another ribbon-cutting means there's more to enjoy at Golden Eagle Park. Two new Little League fields, complete with lighting and scoreboards, offer kids more space to play baseball. The popular park boasts synthetic turf, oversized and shaded dugouts, heated bathrooms, and a year-round concession stand. The sports complex at Golden Eagle Regional Park opened back in 2008 as the largest public works project in Sparks history. Now, it hosts more than 1 million people a year for league and tournament games.
You know, it'll be beneficial for the young children of Sparks to have more Little League fields that they can play on. We had a big, huge shortage a long time ago, and now we've got plenty of fields, but we seem to fill them up. And it's, you know, not only going to be for the children of Sparks, but there's people from all over the county that'll come here and play. So it's very beneficial for northern Nevada.
Yeah, well, one thing everybody forgets is that this is used by locals, but it's also used by a lot of people that come from out of town. I think that Mayor mentioned earlier that there's 100 teams coming from New York State. You know, let's just say there's 10 people on each team, that's 1,000 people. They have to stay somewhere. So, you know, the hotels benefit, they have to eat someplace, so all the restaurants benefit from 1,000. And people forget that last year, we had something like a million people visit this park. I would have to say that probably 80% of them are for outside the area. So once again, it fills up hotel rooms and, you know, restaurants.
I only live a couple of miles from here, and I actually walk my dogs. And yesterday, my wife took me out for a walk around this park. If you haven't been through it, it's well worth it. Some beautiful views on the other side of these hills here. And, you know, I spent a couple hours with my dogs and my wife walking down here. Love this park, love the location of it. I love the fact that it's right pretty much in the heart of the city.
Over at Whittaker Park, another ribbon-cutting marks the opening of new and improved hiking trails and facilities. At 250 acres, Whittaker Regional Park is one of the last remaining areas of significant open space in the city of Sparks. The mayor and city council were on hand to recognize improvements such as a new parking lot, two new trailheads, a picnic pavilion, new restroom facilities, an outdoor classroom, and also shaded seating and a scenic overlook. In another part of Sparks, dirt turns and cinder blocks rise out of the ground. The Legends Outlet Mall in Sparks is now home to northern Nevada's first and only IMAX theater. The new state-of-the-art Galaxy Theater complex includes its signature giant IMAX screen, but also 11 additional auditoriums equipped with all digital sound and projection. Mayor Martini says of the new theater, "It will continue the city's branding efforts as a place where there is always something happening, fun to do and see in Sparks." Sparks has now grown to 91,000 people and 32 square miles, making it the fifth-largest city in Nevada. We ask the police chief, "Do you have enough resources? Do you have enough police officers?"
No, and that's where we need to go into the future, and we need to find a designated funding source to provide for public safety and police within our city. The way that the general fund is working, and most cities are like this, that the police department does take up a majority of the budget, but we have to break that cycle. The police department is funded out of the general fund of the city. So property taxes, sale taxes, all of that go into the general fund. And right now, the police department is averaging somewhere between 35 and 40% of the general fund expenditures of the city. On top of that, you know, we have applied for and received grant funding, and there's several different areas that we've received grant funding. The six officers are funded out of the Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Services Office in Washington, DC. And that was back when we had the first budget cuts. Under the Obama administration, we were able to save six positions that were labeled for layoffs within the city. So we're at the tail end of that cycle, and now we're going to have to pick those officers back up within the general fund. As we look at more officers and we can get those, and as we talked about earlier about cross-beat dispatching and geographically and how it does, that we can get more officers out there, we can give the officers more proactive time while they're working. And you measure officers' times as reactive and proactive. Obviously, reactive is 100% reacting to a call that gets called in the dispatch. Dispatch then calls, you know, the officer, they respond to a past tense crime. And we would like to see at least 50% of our officers' time proactively looking for and addressing crime and traffic within our city. So anytime that they can go out and be proactive, and again, it's preventing those victims from ever occurring. And that is a hard thing to measure, but it's so valuable for our community. Here's the thing, if we can do what we are doing with what we have, I can only imagine what we can do with more. If we can take the things that we've learned through Crime Suppression Unit, create a second one, we could create another one, what could we really do and affect crime and safety within the city of Sparks? Now, we take the same lessons that we have learned through the CSU, and now we apply them to a quality-of-life team, an anti-graffiti team, or an anti-gang team of our own inside the framework of the regional gang unit, and how could we affect gang crime within the city of Sparks, knowing what we have learned and the lessons we have learned through the Crime Suppression Unit model? If we just added patrol officers, it would be one thing. But if we create and use those officers in areas that are going to reduce calls for service, it has a domino effect and allows the number of officers that we have in patrol more time, because they're not responding to those calls for service that would have been called in had we not. So as we create these specialized units that go out and affect calls for service in high crime and high-call areas, it will then actually free up time for the officers. So it's kind of a dual-sided approach. We would take more officers, we would assign them into these areas where we know that we can reduce calls for service and crime, and add additional patrol resources, giving them more freedom and proactive crime to work within our community to address individual needs. And together with that dual approach, we could truly reduce our calls for service and our response times.
32 years is an impressive series of wins. The city of Sparks, Nevada, has earned a 32nd consecutive award, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The award recognizes the quality and accountability of the city's comprehensive annual financial report. An impartial panel judged our city's report as meeting the highest standards in readability, usability, and for full, honest disclosure of the city's financial story. usability, and for full, honest disclosure of the city's financial story. Congratulations and great job to the Sparks Financial Services Department. The city's comprehensive annual fiscal report is available to the public online on the Now, something new is happening here in Sparks. The city now hosts a U.S. Open Hydro-Turf Water Cross National Tour. The annual competition draws competitors and spectators from all over the United States, offering a purse of $12,000 and the U.S. Open title. The public event at the Sparks Arena is a blast to watch, combining big air jumps, stunts, racing, and freestyle competitions. Well, that's a wrap for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Please be sure to pass the word on this important program focused on predictive policing, which can be seen on Sparks Centennial Television, Charter 215, or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You can also view the program on the city's website at cityofsparks.us. Please make sure you follow us on Facebook and Twitter, and be safe out there. Thanks for watching. I'm Adam Mayberry.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
Hey, it's Darren Jackson. Darren is the training coordinator for the City of Sparks Fire Department Swift Water Rescue Team. Darren, tell us about safety on the river. What are some of the tips that the fire department recommends?
First of all, never swim alone. It's a big problem. If you swim alone and you get stuck, nobody knows where you are and nobody knows what's happened to you. Secondly, on a hot day, it's nice to have a beer along the river. Don't have too many because it'll impair your judgment. And with the water temperatures going on, the alcohol can speed up hypothermia as well. We've got a big snowpack up in the Sierras. We're going to have a lot of water, cold temperatures. Hypothermia is a very real problem. You need to wear the proper safety equipment, wet suit or dry suit, helmet, PFD primarily. If you go with nothing else, it needs to be a PFD. You've got to look out for strainers, obstacles that the water can go through that you can't. If you get pinned in one of those, it's easy to drown. There are three dams on the Truckee, if people don't know that, and they're not really safe to boat over unless you're an advanced boater.
Hello, and thanks for watching this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. I'm your host, Adam Mayberry. And today for this segment, we're talking about economic development and how important it is to create jobs in our state. And with us is none other than Governor Brian Sandoval. And we're honored to have the governor on the program today from the great state of Nevada. Governor, thank you so much for coming on the program and spending some time to talk with us.
Thank you for having me. Great to be back in Sparks.
As our governor, I know economic development is extremely important to you. You helped craft legislation, Assembly Bill 449, this last legislative session, that creates a government structure for economic development for our state. Can you tell us what the state's role is in economic development and what your vision is of economic development for our state?
Sure, and economic development is my number one priority. I mean, I think the solution for our state is jobs, jobs and more jobs, and to diversify our economy. We've always been a tourist-based economy and a gaming-based economy. I think it's extremely important that we capitalize on the resources that we have. Assembly Bill 449 is an important component of that. We're going to reconfigure the way the state of Nevada approaches economic development. The governor will now be the chairman of the Economic Development Authority Board. It's going to become a cabinet-level position. That's something that was extremely important and was a priority for me because one of the legacies that I would like to have is to diversify our economy and bring more jobs here. Unfortunately, we lead the country in unemployment, which is not a statistic that I'm proud of. Things have been getting better. When I first stepped into office, it was about 14.8, 14.9, you know, on the higher side of that. It's getting down to about 12. You know, certainly, I'm not going to take credit for that, but I think what's my responsibility is to improve that. So hopefully, I'm responding to your question, but we worked extremely hard during the legislative session with legislative leadership. A lot of credit has to go to Senate Majority Leader Stephen Horstford with Speaker John Osagara, and the minority leadership Pete Gokacchia and Mike McGinnis out in Fallon. We all worked and collaborated together to do this bill because that was one place where there was agreement, that we need to work hard to bring companies to the state of Nevada, but also strengthen the companies that we have. I think it's really important, again, that we have a lot of companies that we can be proud of, and we have to create an environment where they can thrive.
Governor, tell me what kind of role you envision that the local governments, like the city of Sparks, have in economic development?
Sparks is a community that I'm extremely proud of. I grew up there. I consider myself a son of Sparks, and they've accomplished a lot. And I'm proud of what the city of Sparks does in terms of economic development. But being responsive to your question, we have the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada, EDON, is the acronym. I'm told there's going to be a merger with the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce. So when those two collaborate, with regard to the new structure, we're going to have what's called a catalyst fund as part of Assembly Bill 449. That will be a fund of money so that when companies perhaps need some help to get over the line to come to the state of Nevada, that we'll be able to provide those funds to help them with those relocation costs. The local governments will have a very important role in all of that because they will be part of the decision-making process and distribution of those funds. So the city of Sparks will be playing a very important role in all that.
Governor, we've talked a lot about the public sector role in economic development. What's your vision of the private sector's role in economic development?
Well, again, this is going to be a very big team effort. Local governments are going to have to be working with the private entities and the employers and the state to all make this happen. I've been reaching out to a lot of different companies. When I was campaigning, I visited over 100 businesses. I'm continuing to do that throughout the state of Nevada. There's a lot of good stories to tell. There are a lot of companies that are looking at both northern and southern Nevada as places to do business. We have a very strong business environment. You know, the bad news is that we may have high unemployment rate, but we have a lot of available people that can go to work immediately. And we are also working on retraining some of those folks so that when we bring those businesses in. But I'm relying on the private sector to help us to get to where we need to be.
Well, despite some of the challenges that our state has faced, there's still a lot of hope on the horizon. There's distribution, there's clean energy, there's still some desire for manufacturers to come to Nevada. What kind of incentives can the state provide to those kinds of businesses to relocate and to be successful in our state?
We are, right now, one of the first things that we did after the passage of Assembly Bill 449, which is that bill that remade economic development, was to have a fund of money, I believe it's close to $1 million. And we've hired what is called the Brookings Institute to do a study. And so that study is occurring right now. They are going to determine where the clusters are, where Nevada can capitalize on our resources, where we're strong already, so that we can focus our efforts on those groups. There's going to be a meeting that occurs on July 25th, so only a few weeks ago, where Brookings is going to tell us what their preliminary findings are. What's good for Sparks may not necessarily be good for what's good for Henderson or Tonopah, or all the different communities throughout the state, so that that's going to set the template or the direction as to where economic development is going to go.
Well, Governor, to conclude our conversation, let me ask you, what do you think makes Sparks so special and a good place to do business?
Well, where do I start? I mean, I think Sparks is a wonderful community. My brother lives in the city of Sparks. He lives out in Wingfield Springs. It has a very high quality of life, so I think that's something that I talk about when companies hear and talk about the quality of life that we have both in Reno and Sparks, but particularly in Sparks with the ball fields and the schools that you have there, the opportunities for shopping, the opportunities for recreation, the quality of the local government. I think those are all things that you can tell a great story, that Sparks is a wonderful place to do business and call home.
Governor Sandoval, thank you so much for coming on Spotlight on Sparks. We're very appreciative of your time, and our viewers appreciate seeing you.
I'm happy to be here, and Adam, thank you for having me here. As I said, I'm very proud of Sparks, and I tell everybody that it was a great place to grow up, and I think other families are finding that out, and the people that are going to come here are going to say, you know, that Sparks is a great, great community and has a lot of opportunity. You know, the parks and all the things that I've talked about today make it a wonderful, wonderful place to live.
There's more Spotlight on Sparks coming up right after this. You know, tough times like these, the best thing that local governments can do to encourage a growing economy is to cultivate a climate that is friendly to business.
Well, you know, the economy is our biggest enemy right now, getting people back to work, getting them to be able to put food on their tables and take care of their families. That's tough nationwide, not just here in Sparks. So I think one of the priorities we have to have is getting people back to work. No matter how we do that, we get people back to work.
To get people back to work, we need jobs.
Yes, the trickle-down theory, you know, still works, that you're building houses, that means we have jobs, we have construction jobs. Then they buy groceries, and they buy cars, and they buy houses, and so it's, you know, that whole cycle.
More so than ever, we face the need to grow. And fortunately, we have the land, the infrastructure, and the workforce to make that a reality.
City government creates jobs by enticing businesses to set up shop in Sparks.
Because our atmosphere here, as far as businesses goes, is a lot better than California and a lot better than Oregon. So that's what I'm going to be concentrating on, and that is I'm going to probably have, you know, be a salesman for the city of Sparks and get some business parks here. Because you get a business park here, we get, first of all, the jobs that we need.
I mean, it's our responsibility to develop our city, to develop the type of industry we want to be here and what we want the city to look like in the next century.
Right now, the focus really, really needs to be on getting our people back to work, bringing businesses here.
Ideas abound for how we might diversify the local economy.
Open-air event center.
If we can bring in high-tech development or biotech, things like that.
We start building up Kylie again.
Our revenues, about 90% of the time, are generated by private activity. So when people are in our economy, fully employed, we're going to see more revenues. When we have growth occurring, we're going to see more revenues. When we have a healthy community where our businesses are growing and prospering, we're going to have revenues that will provide us the basis to provide the services that people have come to expect in Sparks, and that's why we say it makes a difference to live in Sparks.
Even as city leaders work to bring new businesses to town and build our fiscal future, they also continue to nurture and grow the special events industry. Escape Sparks, it's branding slogan. Sparks, it's happening here.
I think everybody really understands today how critical special events are to our economy, to bringing tourists to the region, to making Sparks on the map. And so we are really looking at what improvements can we make that help accelerate and improve the special events environment in Victorian Square.
It's been in the history of who we are, special events. We've done a great job with the Legends Project, bringing that on in and bringing more tourists to our area for shopping. We need to continue those themes, continue looking at all the things that are going to increase tourism, and the importation of tax dollars from other communities. That's a lifeblood of who we are.
The newest member of the Sparks City Council, Ed Lawson, serves the people's business by smoothing the way for new business. Councilman Lawson really wanted to take this opportunity just to find out a little bit about what piqued your interest to run as a member of the city council.
Well, the biggest part was that I've been involved with the governments through YESCO on the Government Relation Committee. So I've gotten to speak with lots of different entities, governmental entities, and help rewrite sign codes and whatnot for the different places. And I was also the spokesman for the billboard industry in the early 2000s, and just decided that it was just time to put my money where my mouth was and go out and make something happen. And quite frankly, I think we need more people like me, that citizen legislators, legislators that go out there and, you know, take time away from their business to make a difference for their city. Well, one of the big issues for me, and because we see it here at YESCO daily, is the permitting process. And with the cuts that we've had to make, and it's very understandable that the process would take longer to get through, but it's a customer service issue when you really think about it. The city of Sparks is no different than any other business. Our customers are citizens, and we need to treat them that way. And I think we have great people at the city of Sparks. But my main focus right now is to improve that permit turn time and make it easier to do business in the city of Sparks.
Tell me a little bit about yourself, about your job, the history of your professional life, and how you came into working with YESCO.
Well, I grew up in Las Vegas. My dad moved there, moved the family there when I was four years old. And so I grew up in Las Vegas. Lucky enough that I got a full-ride football scholarship to Colorado State, and I went to school at Colorado State where I met my wife. We got married in 1983. We have two boys, one's 25 and one's 22 now. And both of them attend the University of Nevada. And been married to my lovely wife, Diane, for the 28 years. Very much loved to hunt, as you know. That's one of my favorite things, checkered hunting, big game hunting, anything that gets me outside. My wife and I loved to camp. Basically, I started to work for YESCO in 1997, and I've always been a salesman my whole life. So, you know, right out of college, I was selling insurance, and I worked for Motorola for the factory at Motorola for, I don't know, the rest of my life, and then I came here. And so I really have only had one kind of a job, but only three different products that I've sold. But the thing that's most interesting about this is I get to work with business people every day, and I'm branding their business, and I'm helping them to make, to call attention to their business. And there's a lot that goes into that. And then all these wonderful people we get to work with here at YESCO, we have, you know, some 85 employees right here in this area, in this building.
Right in Sparks.
Right here, yep. So we're a big major employer.
Well, this is the spring of 2011. At this point in time, do you see an uptick in the business here regionally? Any general perspectives that you can offer?
You know, I wish I could say we do. I don't see, I mean, we see little glimmers of hope here and there, but I don't think we're quite, quite at the bottom. We're very close, in my opinion. We're very close. However, I don't think we've quite gotten there. You know, it's, we're a front-end type business in the sign business. So people are opening businesses, you know, we're the ones that get the mom-and-pop signs, we're the ones that deal with the casinos. So we are a pretty good leading economic indicator. As those businesses start making changes and moves and opening, you know, we're going to see that. And, you know, we're still not seeing that activity as much as we'd like to. There's some, but it's not, you know, we're not at the bottom, let's say. You know, we get to see it from right from the creative part, where you take a little piece of paper, and then I hold it up to you, and you say, "Is that what you wanted, Adam?" And you say, "Yep, that's what I want." So then we take it back. We then turn that flat piece of paper... We then turn that flat piece of paper into a 3D object and put it up on the wall. And so hopefully, when we're done with the process, I come back to you and say, hold that picture up and look at the sign on the wall and say, is that what you wanted? And you say, absolutely. Well, basically, everything's kind of segmented up to the different parts of the sign. And you touched on sheet metal. Sheet metal and welding and all that kind of happens in the back part of the shop. And the painting is back there also because you want to get your paint on at that time. And then as the sign moves forward, it comes to the electrical department and to the Plex Department where it gets its faces and, you know, put on it. And then everything gets moved to the back again and goes out and gets put on the wall. That's a very, very satisfying way to do business because everyone's happy when you're
When a new business sets up shop in Sparks, the first stop is often the city's Community Services Department. Director Neil Cruz explains what draws these businesses.
There are a couple of things that we as the city really play a key role in, in terms of economic development. And I think first and foremost, that's the quality of life. I think that is a huge part of the decision for any business to decide to relocate to or from an area is the quality of life and where they're potentially going.
The Legends at Sparks Marina is an example of how the city government sells its location to the business community. The task is worthwhile to bring commerce and jobs to town. But local government is far from alone in its economic development efforts.
Well, again, I think the public sector is always going to be involved just on a day-to-day basis when we're talking with developers and those kind of things.
And really, I see four tiers of economic development, three of them in the government and one in private sector. You know, it is that private sector mentality, that business vibrancy in a community that is driven by the private sector. They play a strong role in Sparks and in Northern Nevada as a whole, and they need to continue to do that.
The private sector is still going to be involved with some of the agencies like EDON and those kind of things. So they're going to still be members of those particular agencies and, you know, put money into those agencies and work on economic development. So I think as a partnership, it'll be much stronger.
And we look forward to continuing to partner with them in doing that. And then on the governmental side, I really see three tiers. Certainly, there's been a lot of activity, you know, from the governor's office, from the legislature with the AB 449, that's going to provide some money to drive economic development, to plow into business investment within our state and to allow for some tax breaks within our state where it makes sense. And that's, you know, the legislature's role is appropriate there. And I think that is a key component to economic development in Northern, in Nevada as a whole and certainly within Northern Nevada. The second tier under that, I think, is a regional effort. We need to have Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, Carson City, Douglas, Minden, Fernley, Dayton, all of Northern Nevada to a business community and somebody from outside of this area, they're not going to distinguish necessarily, you know, say Sparks from Reno. They're coming to look at Northern Nevada. And I think we need to cooperate at that regional level. I think we've done a very good job of it here, Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, or the Truckee Meadows as a whole. And I look forward to seeing us kind of spread that blanket out and include more of Northern Nevada. And then, you know, the base tier, the closest to the city, and I think really coming back to the quality of life, that is a local government duty. That's where I think, you know, we do our best work and our most important work, is making sure that we have a well-planned community, a safe community, a community that you can actually drive around in, that's not, you know, gridlocked, so that you have a good transportation system, whether it's in your car or whether it's public transit, that you have a customer service friendly attitude from the local government. Because we're going to be close to that business. You know, the business might be brought in by the state with some tax incentives, but when they come in and set up and operate continually, it's the city of Sparks that they're going to deal with, whether it's through a fire inspection system or a business license renewal. That's a basic relationship that we need to maintain with the business community in our city.
Director Cruz says it's critical for the community to attract new and relocating businesses.
Business is a huge part of allowing the city to operate. It's businesses that generate the revenues, you know, that pay those higher property taxes through living in nice buildings, you know, having to construct facilities to do their business in. They're the ones that provide the revenues to the city so that we can work hard on the quality of life issues that I've already addressed. People want to feel safe in their community and they certainly do that by seeing police officers, you know, by seeing crime rates that are relatively low. That all costs money and it's largely business that provides the money to drive that engine in the city. The business community is the one that sets the tone in the community, whether it's a vibrant business community, you know, is it active, is it wanting to see itself grow? I think there's the basis of economic development in that region. And I think the government plays a supporting role there, coming back to that facilitative role that I spoke to earlier, where, you know, we want to bring people to our community. And then I think a key part of doing that is helping them feel welcome and then running them through the processes, whether it's a simple building permit process or if they need some sort of land use entitlement, that we do that as friendly, as quickly as possible, really in a transparent and predictive way. You know, predictability, I think, is a huge thing for government. People ought to be able to walk in our front door and have a pretty darn good idea of what's going to happen next.
Businesses look for cities where it is easy and attractive to conduct business. The key is a responsive, streamlined government.
In responding to the economic condition that we've been in here for the last several years, we have consolidated, you know, within the city, trying to live within that reality. But one of the benefits that we are enjoying out of that is that we have what formerly were, you know, the public works duties and the planning duties that existed separately are now co-joined. And so when somebody comes in and wants to start a new project here, you know, we can bring everybody to the table quickly, whether it's from the health department, whether it's from transportation, whether it's from sewage treatment. I know nobody likes to talk about that, but everybody flushes the toilet. So the ability to bring all of those people really under one umbrella very quickly is, I think, the key thing for the city.
So just what is the city's best asset in drawing new business?
We are a safe place to live. We have a fantastic park system. We have a great recreation program. And then inside of that, I think there's a mindset that we as the city staff work very hard to carry forward. And that is a mindset that is open and I'll call it facilitative. The approach that we take is one of common goals. A business wants to come here and grow, we want to see our city grow and flourish so that it makes Sparks an even nicer place for people to live, work and play.
Sparks is proud to announce the city's new website. The 24-hour virtual city hall is a hub of information on city events, recreation, dining, shopping and more. The new website makes information easy to find for visitors with an "I want to" menu structure and "It's Happening Here" widget and easy interactive forums for residents and businesses. For residents who have business with city hall, a click or two quickly accesses city council agendas and minutes. You can view live and archive meetings online and watch broadcasts from Channel 215, the City of Sparks government channel. With its dual city hall and visitor focus, the website can be reached through two URL addresses, cityofsparks.us or sparksithappeninghere.com. It is even available in mobile editions, too. The new website was paid for by hotel room taxes. No City General Fund dollars were used to pay for the website.
Smart stewards of taxpayer dollars know staying out of the red means watching revenues. For Sparks, it also means going green to save green.
The city and Envy Energy are celebrating completion of a solar power project expected to reduce the city's annual power cost by as much as $60,000. As part of its sustainability action plan, the city has installed 300 kilowatts of solar power in the parking lot of the Sparks Police Department to generate energy and reduce the city's electricity cost.
The first year savings we estimate to be about $60,000. Over the life of the system, we expect it to be somewhere between $1.5 and $2 million.
Envy Energy says a solar panel installation will produce about the same amount of energy in a year that 150 homes would consume in that same one-year time. The cost of installation will be partially offset by a $560,000 grant from the federal government's Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block grant and by three Envy Energy rebates.
The days of just slapping solar up on a roof are gone. Our process includes a fairly detailed engineering analysis to determine what the right type of equipment is to use at the location. That includes the solar panels and the inverters, as well as with structures such as this, putting up the shade structure, making sure that we go through for the full engineering in the area. And then it's a detailed plan is developed. In this case, it included lighting to ensure that there's lighting underneath all the locations and the installation. So from a time standpoint, there's not a significant amount of time doing the actual construction, but the preparation for the project is fairly extensive.
The solar panels are part of 18 months of work spanning several Sparks government sites. They include solar projects at two city fire stations and the Larry D. Johnson Community Center. For Chad Dickerson and his almost 50 coworkers at Hamilton Solar, the benefits are much more personal.
This project was kind of a, the work with the city of Sparks is kind of a launching pad for our company. Through the work with the city of Sparks, we were able to establish relationships with our manufacturers that helped us drive down the cost for solar in Northern Nevada. We see about a 25% lower cost of solar in Northern Nevada than we've seen historically in Las Vegas, as an example. And we attribute that primarily to the relationship we've established with the city of Sparks. Thanks to the partnership with the city of Sparks, we are, we've grown to be the largest installer in Northern Nevada. We're working currently with six different school districts and doing all the solar for those school districts, as well as some solar with the Reno-Tahoe Airport, for example.
To learn more about volunteering or economic development, click or call the city of Sparks. That's it for today's program of Spotlight on Sparks. I'm Adam Mayberry.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
Hey, this is Darren Jackson. Darren is the training coordinator for the City of Sparks Fire Department Swift Water Rescue Team. Darren, tell us about safety on the river. What are some of the tips that the fire department recommends?
First of all, never swim alone. It's a big problem. If you swim alone and you get stuck, nobody knows where you are and nobody knows what's happened to you. Secondly, on a hot day, it's nice to have a beer along the river. Don't have too many because it'll impair your judgment. And with the water temperatures going on, the alcohol can speed up hypothermia as well. We've got a big snowpack up in the Sierras. We're going to have a lot of water, cold temperatures. Hypothermia is a very real problem. You need to wear the proper safety equipment, wet suit or dry suit, helmet, PFD primarily. If you go with nothing else, it needs to be a PFD. You've got to look out for strainers, obstacles that the water can go through that you can't. If you get pinned in one of those, it's easy to drown. There are three dams on the Truckee, if people don't know that, and they're not really safe to boat over unless you're an advanced boater.
It's another fantastic day right here in the city of Sparks, Nevada. We have a great program lined up for you on this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. Stay tuned. Every commercial and residential structure in this city must be safe for workers, customers and residents. How does the city make sure that buildings are safe and up to standards? Meet the man in charge of making sure that you're safe inside.
Public safety is the number one priority for the city of Sparks. And while most folks think of the police officers and firefighters who protect them, the city of Sparks Building and Safety Division also works hard to protect residents.
Yes, I'm definitely passionate about the site, the safety portion of what we do for the building department. When a person walks into a building, they assume that the building they're walking into is safe and that they're not going to have to encounter any hazards within the building and like shock, shock, electrical shock, that they can assume that if there's an emergency inside the building, that there's going to be adequate exiting for them to egress the building safely. So as part of that, we're making sure that people that are coming to the city of Sparks, whether it's the citizens or the visitors, that the built environment is safe.
The Sparks Building and Safety Division has several responsibilities to ensure the structural safety and building code compliance of all commercial and residential property. The city will not sign off on any project until everything is up to proper safety and operational standards. So how are building projects evaluated and inspected and what are building inspectors looking for?
Anything that's being built in the city of Sparks, we regulate. So the first process in with the permitting process is to provide plans to the Sparks Building and Safety Division, which we review for compliance with the codes. And then off of those plans, the inspectors go out and we inspect the structural components of a building, such as the roof, the walls, the foundation. Then we also inspect the electrical systems, which includes lights, electrical service, switches, receptacles. And we, all those components are looked at for life safety. We also inspect the plumbing systems, plumbing systems for the piping, plumbing piping, water, the drain pipes and any kind of drains, faucets, you know, any kind of a plumbing fixture. Then we also look at the mechanical system, which includes the air conditioning systems in a building, which includes the mechanical units themselves, the ductwork that distributes the air and any kind of return features of the mechanical system.
Sometimes a project doesn't pass inspection.
When they do the inspection, the inspection writes what's known as a correction notice. Correction notice has the things that need to be fixed on a project. So he'll hand over the correction notice to the permit holder, they'll make sure items get corrected, and then they'll call back in for a re-inspection of those items that need to be corrected.
While most construction projects are fairly straightforward, sometimes city inspectors get to think outside of the box.
You know, we really do a wide variety of inspections on a lot of different projects. One of them would be the new IMAX theater that's just recently been built in Sparks. That isn't your typical building warehouse. So it's, in that aspect, it's interesting because we have a really high volume of people that will be in a building at once. And so we have to make sure that the people can exit properly out of there in case of an emergency. At Wild Island Water Park, we do inspect the structures and the slides themselves and they submit plans to us. We take a look at those plans and look at the structural integrity of the large stairs that climb up to the slides. We also look at the connection of the slides to those structures.
Many Sparks homeowners want to make improvements to their homes, and Miranda and his team have some valuable advice to consider when thinking about doing any home improvement project in the city of Sparks.
If you're going to do any kind of a small project on your house, such as change out your water heater or convert your garage into office space, you really, before you open your toolbox, you need to ask yourself a question, do I need a permit? Because permits are required for many of those small construction projects that you do around the house.
Sparks building inspectors play a vital role behind the scenes to ensure a high quality of life in our city. For more information, log on to the city's website or call 353-555.
Spotlight on Sparks recently sat down with Lieutenant Governor Mark Hutchinson of the Gray State of Nevada, talked about an array of issues and all the exciting things that are happening right here in Northern Nevada. Here's what he had to say.
The role of the lieutenant governor is to serve as a member of the executive branch of government. When you think about the judiciary and the legislative branch, and I serve in the executive branch of government, but I also have one foot in the legislative branch. So I serve as the lieutenant governor in the executive branch, but I'm also the president of the state senate. And so it's a very unique position that way where you have responsibilities and duties in the executive branch of government as well as in the legislative branch of government. And so during the course of the legislature, I will preside over all the floor sessions in the state senate and direct the proceedings there in the senate and the arguments and the votes that occur in the senate. And then I'm also the chairman of the Nevada Commission on Tourism. And then I'm also the Chairman of the Nevada Commission on Tourism. And as you know, Adam, tourism continues to be the number one industry in the state of Nevada. Many, many jobs depend upon that industry. And I love spending time on tourism and strengthening tourism, both in the urban areas, but also in the rural areas. One of the real focuses for the Nevada Commission on Tourism is rural tourism and increasing that. I also serve as the Vice Chairman of the Board of Transportation. So all things related to Nevada Department of Transportation and the projects that happen there and the policy that's being set is what occurs at that board. And I'm also a member of the Board of Economic Development, which statewide is charged with bringing in new businesses to the state of Nevada, diversifying our economy, expanding existing businesses in the state of Nevada, and really doing all we can to create jobs. And then recently, I became a member of the Commission on Homeland Security, which is the commission that is charged with implementing policy and funding priorities for anti-terrorism programs here in the state of Nevada. First, I think that local governments are the best place for so much to happen because they're closest to the people. And that's where I think the founding fathers of this country intended most government to occur, is at the closest level to people, local governments, in the cities, in the school districts. And that's where good policy is made, and I think that's where, when we are at our best as government, much of what we do in government occurs. And so I interact on a regular basis with local government officials. For example, in economic development, I have gone all over the state and worked with local leaders, local government leaders, but also local business leaders, who in connection with their local governments, create the policies and create the programs and set the priorities for the economic developments within each of those communities. So I've worked closely with local governments that way, and it's an important way for us to interact with state and local agencies. The question was first surfaced in terms of the economic incentives and the tax incentives to get Tesla here to northern Nevada. So I was involved in legislative process with Tesla, continued to be involved in the executive branch of government with Tesla as Lieutenant Governor. And so, you know, that's the biggest economic development and the biggest issue and the biggest business opportunities that we have in Sparks in a very, very long time. And it has really, as you well know, in Sparks, just created a real synergy, a real sort of ecosystem that now we've got advanced manufacturing in Sparks. We've got an advanced manufacturing so close to the workforce there that we're going to see workforce development emphasized in Sparks and northern Nevada in a major way, where we're going to train now the next generation of workers to be not only in Tesla, but in these other advanced manufacturing facilities. The other thing I would say about Sparks and northern Nevada is it's got a real entrepreneurial community here, probably more so than anywhere else in the state that I've seen. Sparks, Reno, northern Nevada, have this entrepreneurial spirit, these startup companies. You hear about Startup Row, you hear about the Innovation Center, you hear about what's going on at UNR with all this entrepreneurial energy. And I think Sparks has got a very bright future as we really emphasize more and more entrepreneurship and startup companies in northern Nevada. Transportation is a vital part of what we do in government. It's one of the fundamental things that we have got to be sure that we are getting people to and from where they want to go in a very efficient manner. And so we have undertaken, as a state, just tremendous projects now, really simultaneously in transportation, not only down south, but up north. The biggest one we have right now is the construction of USA Parkway. And that's going to connect, really, I mean, I-80 right at Sparks, that will take it all the way down through to Highway 50, and will provide that corridor now, a transportation corridor now, which I think will increase business and economic development in Sparks that hasn't been there before because of the transportation issues. And we're also looking at, you know, larger scale transportation issues when it comes to the new economy and the new modes of transportation. In this last legislative session, as you know, there was a lot of discussion about the on-demand transportation companies like Uber and like Lyft. The legislature has addressed those issues and will continue to address those issues as we see those companies come into the state. There's a lot of policy issues that need to be worked out, but that's, you know, the next generation of transportation that is going to come, not only in Sparks, but throughout Nevada. We're also continuing to work as NDOT seeks to improve the road conditions and seeks to improve the accessibility for residents of Sparks throughout northern Nevada. I am the product of Nevada public schools. I went from elementary school to middle school, we used to call it junior high school then, to high school, and then through college, all the way through the public school system here in Nevada. Every one of my children have done the same thing. And I'm through and through a public education product. I then went to law school at Brigham Young University and have been practicing law for 25 years and have my own law practice and have had that practice for about 20 years. And so I get up in the morning and wonder where my next client's coming from and are we going to be able to make payroll? And so I appreciate small business owners and what they go through in finding customers and making a payroll and providing jobs for our fellow Nevadans, and I love it. I've got six children and four grandchildren, so my grandchildren now are fifth generation Nevadans. And I am married to the greatest woman that has ever walked the face of the earth. She puts up with me and puts up with my challenging life and does it with a smile and has been a companion and a partner and a sweetheart of mine for over 30 years of marriage. And could not be in love with anybody more than my wife and my family. So first and foremost, I'm a husband and a father, and then I'm a public servant and somebody who loves Nevada.
You know, if I told you to go take a ride in a concrete canoe, you'd probably think I was insulting you. But that's not the case with these University of Nevada students who participate in a competition put on by the American Society of Civil Engineers. Take a look at this.
Engineers are tasked with solving all kinds of problems, but can they make concrete float? Well, you bet, and that's just what engineer students did in the annual American Society of Civil Engineers Concrete Canoe Races at the beautiful Sparks Marina.
It's amazing, you know, what you can do to get it to float.
Concrete canoe is a year-long competition where we have to do various aspects like mixed design and construction, and we have to essentially make something that's not supposed to float, float.
Club teams from 15 area universities recently completed in the Mid-Pacific Conference events, and the overall title went to the University of Nevada. Nevada engineering students will take this year's canoe, nicknamed Zephyr, to the national competition for the 11th straight year. But don't try this at home. Zephyr is the latest product of years of applied engineering and trial and error.
So it's a lot of extensive testing and different mixes to try and get the right ratio to make the boat actually float in the water.
So we have a very lightweight concrete. We have a lot of aggregates in it. You know, some teams use foam, other teams use little glass particles so that that helps keep the weight of the concrete down.
The teams are not allowed to try the canoe out before the competition, so they have to believe the science is right.
We do a really extensive testing on our concrete cylinders to make sure those will float. And then once we come up with a mix, then we actually construct the canoe. And we actually don't bring it out until, this is the first day that the boat's been in the water. So we don't know if it floats until we get here on race day.
The Sparks Marina hosts many diverse events throughout the year, and the city is always working to bring more exciting and unique events to the one-of-a-kind venue.
The Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility is a joint-owned facility by the Cities of Sparks and Reno and operated by the City of Sparks. Recently, the facility unveiled a new generator that's capable of producing 35% of the plant's energy needs by turning methane gas, a byproduct of the sewer treatment process, into electricity. Take a look.
Sparks residents will save money on energy in the future following the installation of a new cogeneration engine at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility that turns methane gas into electricity that the plant can use.
While we may be two cities, Tunnel Wharf brings Sparks and Reno together as one to serve the needs of our residents. Tunnel Wharf is a true representation of local governments working cooperatively together to meet the needs of our residents. So this is a great facility. It's something that we need to have, you know, we can't function without it. So it's good to be able to celebrate something like we're going to be the generation which saves us lots and lots of money, and there's more to come.
Built in 1966, the facility processes 28 million gallons of water every day for Sparks, Reno, Sun Valley, and other parts of Washoe County.
About three years ago, we started an energy services project and we addressed, to address a number of different issues at the plant. Electrical consumption was one, chemical usage was another area we looked at, and one of the things that came forward was we should beneficially reuse the gas that was being produced anyway here at the plant.
The technology here is dated and due for modernization to make the water treatment plant more efficient and environmentally friendly.
So through a concerted team effort, we put a lot of work into this facility, and we were able to bring the daily average discharge of treated water in the Truckee River to 408 pounds per day. That's a reduction of almost 25% in the nitrogen that's going back into the river. That's a really big deal. And again, not just because the feds or the state are watching, but because it's good for the river, it's good for the wildlife, it's good for all of us together.
When complete, the $24.9 million project is projected to save taxpayers $1.1 million a year in operating costs. Some of the changes are simple, like swapping out old lights for newer, energy-efficient LEDs for an immediate savings. Other projects are more complex, improvements including replacing aging pipes and pumps.
So we use that electricity, we're not buying electricity from the grid. It's money into our, not to our pocket, but to the citizen's pocket. It helps defer rate increases, keeps sewer rates lower.
But the biggest change of all is equipping the plant to harvest phosphorus and methane, both natural byproducts of the water treatment process. Phosphorus will be used to make fertilizer. The methane gas will turn turbines used to generate electricity. That energy will in turn be used to run the facility and save the plant from buying all of its power. The methane project is particularly important as electricity makes up 20% of the reclamation plant's operating cost. Previously, both the methane and the phosphorus were released. Now these byproducts will become a benefit to the facility while also protecting the environment.
One of the most anticipated and beneficial road projects in the City of Sparks is now underway. The McCarran Pyramid Intersection Project will expand the intersection and enhance safety for the several thousand cars that travel through the intersection every day. The project will take nearly two years, and in the meantime, we ask all our motorists to be patient. Here's how it will impact our residents.
With a simple shovel ceremony, construction began April 2016. Yet the engineering and effort of getting to this day were far from simple. The Regional Transportation Commission and the City of Sparks have worked closely on this project to transform one of the city's busiest intersections into one of the city's best.
This is the intersection of two roadways that are on the national highway system, high-volume roads, roads critical to economic development, roads critical to moving people to jobs, educational opportunities. At the same time, this is a road that's in a very well-established neighborhood, lots of neighborhood services on all corners. We have a church, we have, you know, a neighborhood shopping center across the street, we have homes, you know, people walk, people bike, people do, you know, come out and enjoy the outdoors. And so this project is significant because we're not just looking at the movement of cars, we're looking at the movement of people. We want to keep people safe.
Some 60,000 cars a day travel this corner. Pyramid Way will get one new travel lane in each direction, designed to ease traffic. But it's waiting on the turn lights and really stacked the cars up at rush hour. So now, thanks to this project, both Pyramid and McCarran will soon be striped with dedicated turn-only lanes. The project will add new sidewalks for pedestrians and a paved multi-use path that will parallel Pyramid's eastern side. A series of public meetings gathered public input on the project and led to several design choices. In addition to trees and plants, decorative privacy screens were chosen by the community.
Thank you. That's what it takes, is the neighborhoods, the people, the citizens to give us their input. It's so hard, many times, to get people just to come forth and tell us what's on their mind.
I think it's going to be a beautiful project. What I really like is the way the treatment is on the inside of the sound walls for our neighborhoods. I like the idea that we have walkability from our neighborhoods to the shopping over here. And I like the idea that we are now moving people through the area at an easier pace and hopefully safer in the long run.
The intersection improvements will also carry over to the Pyramid and Queen Way. That intersection will be reconfigured, also for improved safety. Drivers should expect delays and road closures during construction, which should be complete in about 24 months.
Well, you know, in 2005, when I ran, I ran on three transportation issues. Vista Boulevard, which has been taken care of, Pyramid McCarran, which we're working on now, and the Southeast Connector, which will be known as Veterans Parkway. All vital transportation routes for people. It'll alleviate traffic, the headache is getting them built. Once they're built, they're going to love them, and of course, we got the bridge too, the bridge over the Truckee River. These are needed, and we went forward and did them, and we did our workshops, and we did the reach out to the folks. It's, this is a big deal for us.
To learn more about the project and sign up for project updates, visit the project's own website, pyramidmccarron.com.
Sparks Mayor Gino Martini recently delivered his annual State of the City Address and highlighted a very optimistic 2016 and beyond. There are a lot of things happening in the City of Sparks, and the city has finally begun some recovery from the Great Recession. Here's what the mayor had to say.
Mayor Gino Martini's 11th State of the City Address reflected the optimism of city officials for 2016 and the next decade. Like every city in America, Sparks endured some hard times during the Great Recession, but new optimism, new businesses, and new residential development show that Sparks is ready for some good times.
This city is preparing for growth. Our planners and engineers are working with the Truckee Meadows Planning Agency, local legislative bodies, business entities, and individuals to ensure that smart growth will carry our city into the future. Sparks is committed to resisting the temptation to grow for growth's sake.
Today, Sparks is looking forward to projected area growth and is preparing for those challenges with new transportation projects like the Pyramid McCarran improvements and the Southeast Connector. Mayor Martini also stressed that even in the worst of economic times, the city still moves forward with vital infrastructure projects, such as the North Truckee Drain, which is a vital component, and a regional flood control project, and we continue that work today.
I'm very pleased we have completed the first two phases. Eight years ago, Sparks enacted a fee on its residents and businesses to support its share of the flood project. To date, the city has invested $25 million on the North Truckee Drain Realignment Project, which will direct the drain further downstream into the Truckee River east of Vista Boulevard in Sparks. This critical realignment of the drain will reduce and minimize flooding to the Sparks industrial area.
A lifelong resident of Sparks was happy to provide updates on the revitalization of Victorian Square, where three new highly anticipated projects will provide business opportunities and trendy urban loft-style apartments, as well as new residential development projects, which nearly doubled from 2014 to 2015. Sparks is the city best situated to take advantage of the economic benefits from the Reno Tahoe Industrial Center, home of the Tesla, among other companies relocating to the area.
The huge 107,000-acre, 160-square-mile TRI industrial complex lies a mere nine miles from Sparks. All roads leading from northwestern Nevada to TRI take travelers and commuters through Sparks.
It's a great time to live and work in the City of Sparks.
You know, the Sparks Marina is truly the gem in the City of Sparks, and the city has so much to offer, so many unique venues and destinations for visitors and residents alike. In fact, recently, Nevada Magazine rated the City of Sparks as the most popular city in the entire state of Nevada, all because Councilwoman Julia Ratty had a birthday.
Councilwoman Julia Ratty started it all on a whim.
I happened to be traveling out of the state, and so I needed something to read in the airport, so I went in and I grabbed a Nevada Magazine, and I got to the article about their contest that they hold to see which town to feature first or feature next. And there was a deadline, that was my birthday.
While in the airport, she posted a call to action on her Facebook page. Instead of sending birthday wishes, she asked her social media network to contact Nevada Magazine and place a vote.
And so I just quickly put it on Facebook and said, hey, everybody, if you want to give me a good birthday present this year, please vote for Sparks for the Nevada Magazine tour, and we'll be featured, and people responded. Adam jumped on it as well, and we shut down their server. Everybody was so excited about Sparks and has that great community pride.
The publication's Tour Around Nevada campaign invited the public to vote for their favorite city or town. The public response? The City of Sparks, Nevada, received the most votes for favorite city. Nevada Magazine focuses on travel and tourism throughout the state and has been published for 80 years. Publisher Janet Geary attended the mayor's 2016 State of the City Address.
Sparks got a huge, huge response.
Sparks got a huge, huge response for our March-April edition, and so they were our winner of our March-April edition. We have a really nice story in the magazine about Sparks, and we wanted to honor the mayor today.
The exposure is a great promotion for the city, but it's also something more. The overwhelming response from Sparks citizens says something important.
Well, you know, it just tells people that the people that live in Sparks love living here, they love the community, they're very supportive of the community. And, you know, since we asked all the different cities to participate, and Sparks was just overwhelmingly the winner, it lets, you know, it leaves us to believe that Sparks is very much loved by its community, by its residents.
People who live in Sparks love Sparks. They're not here because they have to be, they're here because they choose to be. And that just really came out in this story.
And that's it for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. You can follow us on Facebook or Twitter, or log onto cityofsparks.us for more news and information. State Senator Debbie Smith represented the city of Sparks since 2000. She was a tireless advocate for issues like education and a true champion for the city of Sparks. Senator Smith passed away earlier this year, and we miss her tremendously. We conclude our program in her honor.
Last year, more than 70 people died while crossing the street in Nevada. Don't become part of the procession. Make smart choices when you're walking, and cross the road safely.
Hello and welcome to this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. I'm your host, Adam Mayberry, and I'm reporting in downtown Victorian Square here in Sparks, Nevada. And as you can see, there's just a lot happening. We're talking about a $60 million investment in urbanized living, catered to those that work in the Reno-Tahoe Industrial Center just 10 minutes away. Our tour begins with the C Street Lofts. The former Silver Club Hotel, a 206-unit, six-story building which has been vacant for years, is being converted into a new 100-unit, state-of-the-art, urban loft-style rental community, which will be known as the C Street Lofts. One-to-three-bedroom apartments will have stained concrete floors and 10-foot exposed concrete ceilings. Each unit will have its own balcony, laundry, and fully-equipped kitchen. The project is a venture of LandCap Investment Partners and Green Street Communities.
We believe in the area and the area's, you know, demographics and the emerging employment.
And on to the next project, The Yard, currently known as the Bourbon Square Casino. When renovated, The Yard will offer restaurants and retail on the ground floor. The upper two floors are anticipated to be Class A office space. The project is also an investment by LandCap and Green Street.
One of the things when I was running for election that I got a question of was why, what are we going to do with all that space in downtown Sparks? Well, here it is.
And the third stop on the tour, the newest Victorian Square project. Welcome to the Fountain House, a $35 million investment in downtown Sparks.
What a great day for Sparks, believe me, and I want to thank the small businesses that we have down here on the plaza who stuck with us for so many years, and now I think they're finally going to see some great, great business down here.
I've lived in Sparks 51 years, and downtown has really never been, we've never had a vibrant downtown. We've had businesses here, but just a lot of great special events, but I want to be known for a vibrant downtown.
When Silver Wing Development builds out the community, Fountain House will offer 236 multifamily units and more than 8,000 square feet of retail space catering to tenants looking for urban living.
Yeah, it's a really exciting day. I mean, we've talked about wonderful development plans in downtown Sparks, and lots of really good people have put really good effort into making that happen, but what we really needed was conditions to align where we had good vision and leadership, a good development partner, and the right economic conditions. And so we finally see that happening, and we're going to have a great new project in downtown Sparks.
I have a vision in my head of what this is going to look like in two years, and I can't wait to see it. It's going to be shiny and new and vibrant with people, and I am so excited about this. I can't wait. I wish we could fast-forward two years from now and see what it looks like, because this is one of the best things that's happened to Sparks in a long, long time, and I think it's just going to continue to fold over and to make more and more growth and more and more vibrancy for our downtown.
But this project has been different from one aspect, and that is our work with the city staff. From the mayor down to the room pusher, staff has been fantastic to work with every step of the way.
As the chair of redevelopment, I sat down with them and said, you know, housing is great, but we really need some retail and some additional things for people to do down there. They were open to that vision, and here we are.
I have to thank staff, because staff took this project along with Jay and Doug and moved it forward, did the extra work, did everything they needed to do to get this project moving forward.
LandCap will also build a five-story apartment community at the Marina called the Waterfront. After recent groundbreakings, each developer presented charitable checks to the Sparks Heritage Museum for the preservation of Last Chance Joe.
The downtown Victorian Square project would not have been possible without the help and guidance of the city's planning department. We thought we'd take this opportunity to give you an inside look at one of the city's most important functions.
The planning department does exactly what you think, and even more. City planners work closely with developers and other city departments and regional and city officials to make sure Sparks lives up to the slogan, "It's happening here."
And really, we work very closely with, you know, engineering in particular. And so the planning division's functions are twofold. On the one hand, we have a regulatory function, which means that we regulate land use in particular, as well as, you know, having responsibility for what we refer to as long-range or advanced planning, which is really, you know, looking out into the future and planning for the future of the city.
All projects and commercial and residential development in the city start in the beginning phase, and city planners are there from the beginning to ensure projects get done the right way and work for the city. Once projects are ready to build, city planners present the plans and recommendations to the city's planning commission.
Well, the planning commission is something that's, you know, required by, essentially by state law. And so they are responsible for reviewing development proposals.
And in some cases, final approval comes from the city council.
The city council, of course, is, you know, sets the policy for the city, and there are certain things that they are responsible on the planning side for approving. So, you know, any changes of zoning, they would have to approve.
Every year, Sparks becomes a better place to live and work, and the planning department plays a major role in that. But city planners do a lot more than that. They also work on economic development and redevelopment. The planning department plays a key role in how the city looks and operates, and also ensures the city is following the right path for growth now and into the future. City planners are also involved in permitting zone changes and regional plan amendments, among other things. The Sparks City Council unanimously approved a new waste management program. Single-stream recycling will make recycling easier for residents, provide customers with enhanced waste collection services, and help the city reach its goal to increase recycling.
I'm with Sarah Palito with Waste Management, and Sarah, some big things are coming to Sparks in the name of single-stream recycling. What can you tell us about?
That's right, Adam. We're so excited because we're finally going to be implementing the new single-stream recycling program in the city of Sparks, so we're going to be saying goodbye to these crates and hello to the new recycling carts.
For about a dollar a month, the new residential single-stream recycling program answers calls from residents who sought a simpler way to recycle. Now residents will be able to place all acceptable recyclable materials in one cart, and households can say goodbye to sorting by colored crates.
So Sparks residents will have two cans, the regular green can for their garbage and trash, and then the new 96-gallon container with the blue lid for their recyclables.
That's correct, and it'll be so much easier, so much more convenient. Customers can go ahead and place all of their recyclables into this one can instead of having to do the source-separated method that they had done in the past.
Other service enhancements include access to landfill transfer stations four times a year at no cost, 20 excess waste stickers.
So now, if customers have excess waste that can't fit into their 96-gallon trash cart, they will go ahead and place a sticker on a 32-gallon bag, box, or bundle, and we will collect that at the curb. And that's not all. We are also going to be having excess waste for additional bags with no need for a sticker during the months of May and November, and that'll really help with the leaf season.
Well, for less than a dollar a month, there's more services that Waste Management will be providing to Sparks residential customers. Sarah, what does this mean for the customers in the city?
So in addition to those free dumps that I was talking about, the excess waste stickers and the green waste months where people can place their excess waste at the curb without the sticker, they also can recycle more materials. But one of the new things that customers in Sparks will finally get to recycle is cardboard, and so this gets to go into your recycling cart. It's a waste management. We also have some items that we like to call the Dirty Dozen, and people think that that would be a recyclable item, and it truly is not. One of those happens to be the pizza box. We need to keep this item in the trash can, and the reason for that is it's greasy and it's dirty, and that means that it cannot be recycled. So be sure to place this inside your trash cart. The other items are hangers, cords, wires, hoses, plastic bags, all of those need to go into the trash cart as well.
Waste Management will begin the program and deliver recycling carts to customers by the end of January 2016. First bill for the new service will not arrive until February.
I want to thank Sarah Palito with Waste Management for providing some valuable information on this exciting program that's going to infect every resident in the city of Sparks. For more information, go to the website or the number on your screen. And visit sparks.wm.com or call 775-329-8822.
Councilman Ron Schmidt, representing the city's Ward Five, was elected on June 11, 2001. He will complete his term in November of 2016, being one of the longest-serving members of the Sparks City Council. Councilman Schmidt, thank you for coming on the program.
Good to see you. I'm glad to be here. Thank you, sir. Hey, I have a list of questions for you. Want to begin by asking you, just in general, can you tell us what inspired you to run for the Sparks City Council some time ago, more than a decade ago?
Well, the story is quite long and complicated. It was never in my intention in my life that I ever had a dream of being, running for elected official, and I had a client that we ran into some problems at City Hall, and I didn't think it was fair. I didn't think it was fair to them that they had followed the rules, the process, and things got changed on them halfway through the project. And so I was encouraged to, if I didn't like the process, to do something about it. And it just happened to be within a couple of months after that, the seat was coming open, and registration, and I decided, what the heck, go ahead and do it. So I put my hat in the ring, and we had a very hotly contested primary, and a very hotly contested general election in 2001, and I'm very proud to have served the citizens of Sparks for all that time.
Very good. So come November of 2016, you will have completed essentially your fifth term on the Sparks City Council.
Correct, yes, sir.
And for more than 15 years, you've been at the helm as the city's representative from Ward Five. Tell me, what are some of your proudest accomplishments as a council member?
Oh, Adam, there's quite a few of them, and some that I think people will recognize and some that they don't, are being all the service. One of the, to me, one of the greatest moments of my 15 years was a week that I took 50 high school students to Dublin, Ireland, traveled around Ireland. We were the first high school marching band to ever perform in the Gaelic football championships for, in Longford, Ireland, and they represented all the counties of Ireland were there for the championships, and Sparks citizens, Sparks students represented the city very, very well. And that was followed pretty closely by the, what I consider one of the greatest accomplishments of the city of Sparks, was the legend shopping center. You know, Adam, we're not finished with it. Obviously, when we opened it up in 2008, we had tremendous headwinds hit us at that time, and there's a lot of work yet to be done. And it didn't turn out exactly what we had thought it would be, but it was a great financial investment in the city. It was a great bond between the tourism, state tourism people in the city of Sparks. And if you remember, 15 years ago, Adam, there was an abandoned shopping center in that place that was full of graffiti. We spent months trying to take the owner to court, it was abandoned, and even part of it was burned down because the vagrants had gone in. And, Adam, that was the gateway to our city 15 years ago. That was our gateway to the city, and I was now very, very proud. Now you come in, you come through McDonald's Restaurant, Fairfield Ends, and then you hit the shopping center with a timeless design to it, will be just as relevant 50 years from now. We have an anchor of Shields, as you know, that is world-renowned now for the store. Go through that parking lot on any given weekend and see the out-of-state license plates. You'll be surprised at what you see out over there. And I think to be able to accomplish that took a little over five years from the time I first started, met with Cabello's family on April 4th of 2003 in Kansas City, met with the developers, Cabello's family, started that project going on, and obviously, Cabello's didn't end up there, but we ended up with Shields, who's a much, much better partner to be in that center. And it took five years and a lot of work, but we got there.
Stay with us for more insights from Councilman Ron Schmidt.
The state of Nevada passed a law in 2013 establishing standards for medical marijuana establishments. The first medical marijuana dispensary opened earlier this year in the city of Sparks and presented a set of challenges to the city.
City planners carefully considered how best to fit medical marijuana dispensaries into town. In 2014, the Sparks City Council amended the city's code to allow dispensaries in non-residential areas. Dispensaries must be 300 feet from any community facility and 1,000 feet from any school. Now, the state's first dispensary is in the city's industrial area.
It's not allowed use under our zoning code, right? So we had to amend our zoning code, and we had to decide where, which zoning districts are we going to allow medical marijuana establishments?
City of Sparks has been great to work for. We've had, from early on with city council to the planning department. has all been great. Police Department, Fire Department, it's all going very well. You know, it's a new industry for all of us, us and you as well. Certainly some learning process for all of us, but great to work with.
Cancer, seizures, and chronic pain are just a few of the reasons people come to Silver State Relief. Patients must have a medical marijuana card, background check, and documentation from a doctor and the local BMB in order to purchase any of the six available varieties of marijuana or any of the marijuana-infused products.
A lot of our patients, this is very new for them. So they don't know the different ways to ingest and the different ways to consume, what THC does and all the terpenes. And so we do some classes on that.
As far as with the police department, we work very closely together with them to make sure that the laws are followed criminally as well as the municipal code that's been developed by our city.
Silver State Relief says it's not a smoke shop, but rather a dispensary, making it a safe and secure environment for folks to visit when they need relief from pain.
This thing's a fortress. Certainly, the lobby area is just metal studs. But when you get in back, that's all entirely cinder block, concrete reinforced with rebar. Our product vault has a concrete lid. It allows us to pre-wire all the cameras, so we get them in optimal locations. You know, window placements in the dispensary, if you notice, they're up high.
Now, anytime marijuana product is transported within the city of Sparks, the Sparks Police Department is notified. We're aware of routes, vehicles, employees, all that information just in case of an emergency.
This location's a great location, ton of traffic. It was available to purchase, and the lot was. Plus, it allowed us to build this facility, purpose-built.
The Sparks Fire Department wants you to hear the beep where you sleep. Each year, smoke detectors save thousands of lives, even right here in the city of Sparks. 70% of fire deaths come from homes without smoke detectors or operating smoke detectors. The Sparks Fire Department has launched Project Safe and are committed to seeing every home is equipped with an operating smoke detector.
Project Safe is a program that we came together with on a grant. Started with a grant. And it allows us to go into somebody's home and put smoke detectors in the bedrooms as well as in the hallways. Homes built after 1994 do have smoke detectors, but homes prior to that were required to have smoke detectors in them. So there's a lot of homes in the city of Sparks that do not have smoke detectors. This program allows us to come in, talk about fire safety, as well as put smoke detectors in in all the appropriate areas.
Here's what's available through the city of Sparks Fire. A 10-year smoke alarm for each sleeping area, hallway, and on each floor level. Eight 10-year batteries, if your existing detectors, are less than two years old. Strobe and bed shaker alarm kits for the hearing impaired. Personal home safety checklist, free DVD, escape plan diagrams, stickers, and other safety information. To schedule an appointment with Project Safe, call 775-353-2266.
We continue our conversation with Councilman Ron Schmidt, who's represented the city's Ward 5 since June of 2001. Councilman Schmidt, tell me a little bit about some of your more memorable moments as a member of the Sparks City Council.
Well, I can tell you, one of the saddest moments at Sparks City Council is being a new elected official in June of 2011. You know, you have this tremendous learning curve, tremendous. Because now you're supposed to be an expert in streets and budgets and finance and construction and, you know, people skills and everything else like that. And then just a few months after September 11 happened. And that was one that shook, I think, every community, you know, in the United States, a lot around the world. But as elected official, you start looking at, what have I got myself into? This is much bigger than me. This is not just the city of Sparks, this is the entire community. And that was difficult. That was difficult, and I think we handled it.
That's wonderful. Tell me a little bit about how you have seen the city change since you began your tenure as a councilman.
I think physically, the city was just over 50,000 people in 2001 when I was elected. We were emotionally, I think, in a lot of eyes, people at the backseat to Reno and Washoe County. It was, you moved to Sparks because you couldn't afford to live in Reno or you were not exactly up to par with everybody else. I moved here, my family and I moved here in 95, and we never thought of that in the city of Sparks. We always saw the city of Sparks as a tremendous place, good schools. You know, a lot of opportunity in the city of Sparks. We never really did go down and venture down to the city of Reno because we saw the city of Sparks as home. And I think that we've emotionally, we've grown not only its population to 93,000 people now, almost double the size from 2001, but I think we've grown in maturity, you know, in statute. I think a lot of people look at the city of Sparks as being one of the leaders of our entire region because we tend to make decisions a little bit more based on facts and the future and not trying to do things on emotions. I think that's very important. And I think there's been an entire physical change in the city with wonderful projects like Red Hawk, DeAndrea, great housing stock to bring in some money for the city tax-wise. And I think we've just grown up politically-wise where we're not seen as, if I could use a better word, a stepchild of the region. We're now a player of the region, and I think we control our own destiny in the city of Sparks.
What comes to your mind in terms of a legacy? What would you like the residents of the city of Sparks to remember, Councilman Ron Schmidt?
You know, I'm not sure that I want them to remember Councilman Ron Schmidt, but I do want the citizens to know that the financial condition of the city is in much better shape than it was in 2001. Councilman Schmidt, I believe, I was the driving force in helping to develop financial policies and goals that really allowed the city to travel through 2008. It hurt. We had a lot of layoffs, a lot of things, but we had cash in the bank, more than the state law allowed us to have. And that was a saving grace for the city of Sparks. I hope that people want to have legacies. That, you know, strong financial policies have always been an issue of mine. You know, I don't think we can have too much money in reserves when it comes to government, especially with the type of emergencies we have. It's not like replacing an engine in a vehicle. You know, when we have emergencies, we have billion-dollar floods or million-dollar floods. You know, we have very expensive things that happen. To be able to have those emergencies. I think 2008 is a lesson for all of us that we should be constantly preparing our communities for financial disaster and when we have plenty of time to respond to those disasters and then come out healthy when those disasters are finished. So my legacy, whether it's by name, I guess I'm not interested in the name, is the city of Sparks is financially sound. We still have a ways to go to recover from 2008, but I think we could do it. I think that we could do it. And, you know, I want us to be known in the community of all the entities that we're the most financially sound of all of them. We have our dollars lined up. We have our ducks in a row, and we know what's coming in, and we know what's going out, and we don't spend money that we don't need to spend.
Councilman, on behalf of all the citizens of the city of Sparks, thank you for your service and the work that you've done for making our city even better than it was when you...
I appreciate it, and I think that for every elected official leaving office, the one goal you should have coming in, the one goal you should have coming out is that you're leaving your community better when you leave than when you got there. Whether it's just a little tiny bit or a great big thing, it doesn't matter. It's every elected official's job to make your community just a little bit better. I feel very, very good. After 15 years in office, there's a lot of things on out there that got done. And I'm very happy with that. So thank you for everything you've done for the city of Sparks. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and well said and mission accomplished.
Thank you, thank you.
You've been listening to a conversation with Councilman Ron Schmidt, who served the city of Sparks Ward 5 since June 11, 2001.
Classic car fan to stand on Sparks every August for a week of classic rock and roll, great food, and beautiful machines. Hot August Nights is an iconic Sparks event that brings thousands of people and millions in revenue to the region each year after year. After a run of close to three decades, Hot August Nights is a huge success for the city of Sparks. The nostalgic celebration of mid-century cars and music generates an economic impact around $250 million for the region. In 2015, the event alone brought a half-million people in the town from 40 different states. Many booked hotel rooms for four-night stays. An increase in traffic helps many local businesses, from auto parts stores to restaurants. There are many changes after the 2015 event to include a new three-year agreement, which gives the official hosting of the kickoff event to Virginia City. Now, every year, the mayor of Sparks is proud to choose his favorite car at Hot August Nights. With hundreds of beautiful cars and trucks to choose from, it's never easy. This year, Mayor Gino Martini and his wife Ruth allowed us to tag along as they took on the very difficult task of choosing one car. Here we have the Mayor's City of Sparks Award and our own Mayor Gino Martini going out there to congratulate our winner of this award. And that's it for this installment of Spotlight on Sparks. I'm Adam Mayberry. Thanks for watching. And be sure to stay in touch with the city on Facebook and Twitter and the city's own mobile app. And remember, it's happening here.
Hi, everyone. I'm RTC Public Information Officer Joe Harrington, coming to you from one of the busiest intersections in all of the Truckee Meadows, the intersection of Pyramid Way and McCarran Boulevard. Unfortunately, it's also a high-crash location. But that's why the RTC is embarking on an innovative project to enhance safety and mobility for everyone. After relocating residents at no cost to them, demolition began to make way for big improvements at this intersection. 60,000 vehicles a day travel through the intersection of Pyramid Way and McCarran Boulevard, creating significant safety challenges. This project will create a new additional through lane in each direction on Pyramid Way. Dedicated turning lanes will also be added to Pyramid and McCarran, helping with traffic flow. The southbound freeride on Pyramid Way will be improved, so drivers will be able to more easily get to US 395. The project will also result in an improved configuration of the intersection of Pyramid Way and Queen Way. Additionally, the RTC is constructing a new paved multi-use path that'll parallel Pyramid on the eastern side. It'll be ideal for bicyclists and pedestrians. Plus, the RTC worked with the city of Sparks to preserve mature trees and is creating a decorative wall that will flank the path. Traffic controls are in place, and those involve periodic lane closures. The traffic controls will change throughout the project, so be sure to plan ahead and anticipate delays. Throughout construction, access is being preserved to nearby businesses by maintaining at least one open entrance. Residents can also still get to and from their homes. This project is slated to be completed in spring of 2018. Stay up to date and receive traffic control information via email. It's easy. Just sign up at pyramidmccarron.com. And be sure to follow RTC on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. I'm Joe Harrington for RTC TV. Have a great day. You're RTC, our community.
Even if no one in your home smokes, secondhand smoke can be closer than you think. Secondhand smoke from a neighbor's apartment can enter your home through air vents, through light fixtures, and even through cracks in the walls and the floors. Secondhand smoke is toxic, especially to children. Protect your family.
I don't know, probably more than 20,000, I would assume.
Hundred thousand.
I'm gonna say a lot, so probably around, say, like a million.
Four hundred.
Seventy-five thousand?
Fifty thousand.
I'd say a couple hundred thousand.
About a thousand.
Millions, millions.
Hundreds?
I have an idea, but I think it's a lot of people.
Probably about 400,000?
Probably 200,000.
Oh, golly. I think it's maybe around 35,000 these days, something like that.
Drunk driving or impaired driving.
Texting and driving.
And attention.
Distractions.
Alcohol.
Alcohol. I definitely, alcohol-related, for sure. I think it's eye-opening, after moving and living in Las Vegas the past year, how many fatalities and crashes I've seen personally due to alcohol-related.
I'd say not paying attention to other people on the road.
Go driving, test, driving, test, driving, test.
People are irresponsible in driving. They don't pay attention. They have distractions from, like, cell phones, putting makeup on, to just eating. See, I'm a full-time pedestrian, because I'm legally blind. So I've almost got hit several times just in the crosswalk just because people are not paying attention when they turn right.
Speeding, no seatbelts, things like that.
I've heard drunken driving and then fatigue are the two big ones, perhaps.
Someday in the future, probably.
Yeah, not gonna happen.
No, not at all. I don't think it's realistic. But I do think that if we work towards reaching that goal, that we will decrease the amount of fatalities.
Absolutely not. This is humanity.
No.
No, not with as many cars and not with, you know, the amount of people here.
Yeah, if people stop using their phones while they're driving.
It's not incredibly likely, but it's always good to strive for perfection.
If we can get it under 1,000, that would be cool.
I would say we could at least cut it in half of what it is now.
I have no idea. Two.
If the number was down to 10, I think that'd be good.
Acceptable would be anything lower than what it is now.
Say, maybe 1,000.
I think our goal for fatalities needs to be brought down at least 50% in the next couple of years.
10.
10?
Under 5,000?
Like, under 100.
Less than we have now, I suppose.
Zero?
Zero.
Well, you'd have to say zero for that.
For my family? Personally, zero. That's acceptable for my family.
Zero.
None.
Zero.
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 None.
Zero.
Zero.
None. Obviously, we'd hope for zero. Yeah.
Oh, zero.
Um, zero. You leave the house, you come back to it at the end of the day, I feel like.
Yes.
Sure, yeah. That'd be great.
Yes.
It should be, yes. Yes.
Yep.
Yes, definitely. Yes. I think there should be zero.
I mean, yeah, you have to aim high, I would say.
It should be zero.
That should definitely be the goal. I absolutely agree, yes. That should be the goal.
Business, it's happening here in Sparks, Nevada. Sparks is a hometown where families thrive and businesses flourish. Sparks, Nevada, is all about location, location, location. Just ask local business owners.
If we wanted to be successful in a region, we needed to be...
If we wanted to be successful in a region, we needed to be in that region. Being in Reno, Sparks, allowed us to really serve our western region.
Located along Interstate I-80, Sparks is within a day's drive of any major city on the west coast and just two hours from Sacramento, California. Sparks is a convenient five-minute drive from the newly renovated and modernized Reno-Tahoe International Airport, and Sparks sits a mere 40 minutes from Lake Tahoe National Forest and recreational areas, a year-round playground.
In other words, you can distribute from here as efficiently as anyplace else on the west coast. Because we have such a wonderful business climate in the state of Nevada, this is the place to do business. We have a great quality of life, so those are all things we're gonna capitalize on.
Developers and retailers, now is the time to grow. Sparks is your door to opportunity. Come, build your business or bring your event. The heart of downtown Sparks, Nevada, is a redevelopment district seeking new business tenants. The location is prime. Sparks is the event destination, drawing crowds from the Truckee Meadows but also the entire northwestern United States. Sparks, it's happening here. Events in Sparks cater to all kinds of activities and audiences, but they all have one thing in common: lots and lots of visitors. Businesses can expect as many as 2 million people a year in foot traffic. This young, energetic, mid-sized city offers a great opportunity for your business or event. Check out available public-private partnerships and developer incentives. The amazing Legend Shopping Mall was built at the Sparks Marina, a regional shopping Care to make your business mark on the local landscape? Whether you need a lot of space or a corner office, there's a location to suit every business. Sparks offers an industrial corridor alongside the I-80 and major railroad lines, the downtown events district, great shopping, a unique marina, fantastic parks and recreation, vibrant neighborhoods, new home communities, and quality colleges and universities. Oh, and did we mention we're just 40 minutes from Lake Tahoe? The local economy is strong and stable thanks to a diversified economic base of construction, entertainment, and tourism. Sparks offers a diversified workforce ready to help you grow your business. From Sparks, regional product distribution is easy and affordable. Nevada is one of the most business-friendly states, and Sparks offers affordable utilities, competitive rents, and ongoing City of Sparks economic development efforts. Best of all, business-friendly tax rates keep Sparks business costs affordable. Sparks offers the west coast market without the usual high west coast operation costs. With a pro-business city government, setting up shop is a snap. From licensing and permitting to planning and building inspections, Sparks wants to work with you. Business, it's happening here. New businesses, new restaurants, new nightlife, in Victorian Square and year-round events. There's always something happening in Sparks, Nevada. The Business Friendly City Council and Innovative Sparks Economic Development Department are ready to open the door and welcome your company. Bring your business and come grow with us in Sparks.